But I can tell you, I'm not an engineer and I don't profess to be one. Mr. Pesci is happy with the modifications and/or the changes you made to the plan. There are a couple of things, i.e. the light, that's important that we need to discuss. Mr. Pesci said that that would be left up to the board. There was one other, I'm sorry. I think there was two things, that being one of them. John, I have a real quick question, if I may?
Sure.
I have a question and statement. The boat ramp, do you allow the public to utilize that or is that just for your use?
It's just for the use of the Marina customers.
Good. And also, I want to make a statement. I had said to the people in this audience and others possibly at the prior meeting that this was a new special permit, and I was incorrect. This is a modification of an existing permit, so that's important. Other than that, I think I'm, in reading Mr. Pesci's report, I'm satisfied. I think everything's been covered, other than the two issues that he raised at the end, that were open issues that this board needs to discuss.
Why don't we read this into the record? It's a two-page. Charlie, would you mind? Do you have a copy of it?
Is that the June 26, 2023?
Yeah, exactly. And it's got his title on top.
Yep. You want me to read the?
Yeah, if you would. Pesci Engineering and Associates, June 26, 2023, directed to the Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals, Mary Ann Romero, administrative secretary. Updated engineering review of the proposed special permit modification application at 21 Frog Pond Close and 352 Mashpee Neck Road, Mashpee, Mass. Bim is Romero and members of the zoning board. Pesci Engineering and Associates, Inc. is pleased to provide you with this updated engineering review of the special permit modification application for the proposed parking lot expansion located at 21 Frog Pond Close in 352 Mashpee Neck Road, Mashpee, Mass. As before, I have evaluated the plans for consistency with the town's zoning bylaw and conformance with the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Regulations. I have reviewed the following new information to prepare this letter report. Site plans at 352 Mashpee Neck Road, Mashpee, Massachusetts, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, three sheets dated May 23, 2023, and revised June 14, 2023. This set of plans also includes a lighting photometric plan by others dated June 14, 2023. Landscape design plans for the Leadham residence, prepared by Crawford Land Management, two sheets dated March 24, 2023, and revised June 14, 2023. Stormwater management report and design calculations for the proposed gravel parking and driveway connection at 352 Mashpee Neck Road, Mashpee, Mass., prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, dated June 9, 2023, and revised June 14, 2023. Letter from Cape and Islands Engineering to Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals, Ray 352 Mashpee Neck Road, response, engineering review of the proposed addition dated 6/13/2023 by Pesci Engineering and Associates, Inc. Email response from Mark Dibb to Ed Pesci, Ray 352 Mashpee Neck Road, dated June 14, 2023, with revised stormwater water quality calculations attached. Email from Mark Dibb to Ed Pesci, Ray 352 Mashpee Neck Road, dated June 13, 2023, with signed and dated stormwater O&amp;M report, signed June 13, 2023. The applicant's engineer has revised the site plans and has provided additional and revised stormwater calculations, a lighting plan, and revised landscape plans in response to our previous engineering comments, dated June 13, 2023. The revised site plans, stormwater calculations, and landscape plans have satisfactorily addressed all of our previous engineering concerns. Engineering review concerns, I'm sorry. According to the response letter from Cape and Islands Engineering, the applicant has also accepted my recommended conditions listed as items five and six of my June 13, 2023 review letter under the site plan layout and utility section. However, I have the following final comments. I recommended that all revised site plans and landscape plans have the stamps and signatures by the appropriate design professionals in order to have the proper record plans in the ZBA file. Two, in the June 14 email comments and correspondence with Mary Ann Romero and Mark Dibb, I mentioned that the revised plans show a new pole-mounted lighting in the proposed overflow parking area. I made a comment about how the photometric plan shows the spillage of light greater than 1.0-foot candle onto the vacant parcel to the north. Not knowing whether this property will be developed in the future, I recommended that guards or shields be provided to avoid excess spillage of light to this parcel above one foot candle. The email response from Mark Dibb mentions that this light will be removed. However, subject to the discretion of the board, I recommend that this light pole remain for safety and that the light fixture simply be fitted with the guards or shields to reduce the spillage of light to the adjacent parcel. Thank you again for this opportunity to assist the zoning board in the review of this project. And as always, please call or email me if you have any questions or comments. Sincerely, Pesci Engineering and Associates, Ed Pesci. And just to identify, Pesci Engineering is an independent engineering firm that the zoning board of appeals can call upon to answer questions that we're not qualified to answer, and Mark Dibb is the engineer for the proposed developer of this project. Would you talk about the two final comments that he had, first being the revised site plans, landscape plans, have the stamps and signatures by the appropriate design professionals, et cetera?
So the first comment, that's, excuse me, plans that you have in front of you, you'll see every sheet has a revision date of, I believe, 6/27/23 issued for permit, and then the appropriate stamp on each one, including even landscape architect stamps on the Crawford Land Management Plan. So we feel we've satisfactory responded to that comment. And then the second one, if you go to sheet four, the photometric plan, that plan already reflects a shielded light fixture. I'm sorry, that's, it's sheet three. That's the detail sheet. You'll see along that northerly property line, the lumens that are at the edge of that property line are now at .1 or 0 off the, versus they were in excess of 1.0. I could point it out to you if you need it, but we do have also a, there was just an email confirmation, I believe, from Ed that he was, he was all set and we could...
So you're leaving, leaving the pole and it's got the shield?
Yes, correct.
So you're doing exactly what he asked for?
Yes. So if a motion were to say satisfactory dealing with Mr. Pesci's comment in reference to lighting, you feel you've already done that?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anybody want to see it? Don't wait.
Oh, we can, we'll be in.
Yeah, we're also going to, we're not going to read it into the record now, but there's four typed pages on the letter dated June 14 from Cape and Islands Engineering and responses to all the questions and concerns. So that will go in the file.
On the record.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So that's good.
May I have a copy of the O&amp;M? Can you, do we have a copy of the O&amp;M, O&amp;M here?
You should have a signed hard copy.
I think we do. And presumably you put, well, I would, I would hope you put that on record at the time with the special permit or the modification?
We can...
That would be great.
Pesci agreed with the O&amp;M.
Yeah. No, I just wanted to see it myself because I may, I have a floch out of them.
Looks like good reading.
Oh, I know. So if, if there were a motion made and that motion were to say certainly before you apply for a bill, but the modification has to be recorded along with the O&amp;M, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes, two pages typed written and signed on the bottom by Timothy W. Reedham, trustee.
Oh, great reading.
6/13/23.
And there's the actual form on the back as well.
So this, that'll be same.
What do you have?
Those are the same.
They're all the same?
Yeah, and then the last page, flip it all the way to the end. Scott, you interested in this?
Well, there's more here, dude.
Good reading.
See, maybe that sticks out at your mark.
Well, usually these O&amp;Ms, it states that somebody's going to inspect the site someday. I get concerned over that. I'd rather see a registered engineer inspect at a given specific time. And I presume this O&amp;M says that. Does it state that a registered engineer will inspect and not somebody?
I don't believe it says a registered engineer. It says the required time, and then there's a form on the back, so that, and even, even like state SWPs and things like that, the registered engineer can train a applicant's worker to do those inspections.
Well, the last four or five O&amp;Ms that I have in my possession, I've been reviewing that I have, I'm actually tracking them, so I make a Excel spreadsheet so I can understand if the next major event, I'm going to flip through them. And most of them, if not all of them, say, and my mistake or our mistake, whatever, it says somebody will inspect them. And that's just, to me, you know, I shouldn't be inspecting them because I don't have the ability to inspect them. So I believe it should be somebody such as yourself. I presume you're a registered engineer. I guess you, I think you are.
Is that being qualified?
Yeah. Well, but I don't even want to leave a gray area for qualification. I want to be specific and say a registered engineer will inspect. I mean, what's the big deal?
Is it required that a registered engineer has to do it though?
Well, it's an O&amp;M, so it's whatever we sign off on doing. Technically, correct me if I'm wrong, we can do our own O&amp;M that says we require an engineer to do that inspection, and we could require that to be done monthly. That's up to this board.
I mean, I think that could be a requirement, but I, I could also, I could train you to...
I don't, I don't, I'm not easily taught.
To, to do these, that's the intent. Even the state-level SWP permits allow training of individuals that are on the site daily to...
Let me help this, I think this will help. So I had this long dissertation with Mr. Pesci early on in the process, and I was talking about many things. I'm not going to go through them now. And his protection for me was, we're going to make sure this O&amp;M is airtight. And I shared with him some of my concerns. Someday we'll inspect with somebody. That doesn't work for me. It just doesn't work for me. And so I think for this site, specifically with a, with the concerns that I had and Mr. Pesci saying, I get you, so we've got, I'll prepare an O&amp;M that, you know, thumbs up. I'm a little concerned that it didn't specifically state an engineer, but I, again, I'm not, I'm not Mr. Pesci and I'm not, I don't have his ability. Frankly, as one board member, I think the O&amp;M should say, I'm not going to change its required timing, but I think the person should be, you know, an engineer. I mean, I don't think, I mean, if...
At least qualified in some way. I mean, you could have your eight-year-old son go up and do it. You know what I'm saying? It's so wide open.
I know, but a maintenance person that works on the site daily should be able to be trained by...
But it doesn't even say that on here. Okay, so wide open.
Yeah.
Was Mr. Pesci asking for that?
No, so he's, so this, so this is the, this is the fifth O&amp;M that I will look at, and presumably, I didn't look at this one because I was hoping that I didn't have to look at this one, but I guess I did. My, I'm bad. I get it. But I've said to Mr. Pesci, I actually said to Mr. Pesci, what I'd like to see in the future is an O&amp;M prepared for, let's say, a rain garden for this board, and I didn't have the authority to do so, so I had to, I had to, you know, I ran it by Jonathan because he's the chairman. And so my point is, is we should have as a board, O&amp;Ms for various aspects of drainage, rain gardens, blah, 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 that we can institute and hand to you instead of you handing to us. I think it's better that way. I really do. Because I've got four others, I'm, I'm being tried, but I've got three or four others that are like, somebody will do something someday. That doesn't work for me. So, how can we manage?
So what I would say to the board is that I don't think at this stage, I was like, Tim cares if it says, you know, either a registered engineer or somebody qual, or otherwise qualified person.
Something more specific than what it is, I'm all for.
That's fine.
And so, I was just getting to you, I'm sorry. All right, so.
So I would just, what I guess I would suggest to the board, if the board were to, weren't inclined to approve the project and to condition it, that they can condition that on a revised O&amp;M plan with revised language, whatever paragraph that is, stating that the language would be changed, that it would be inspected based on those timeframes by a registered engineer or otherwise qualified person.
That works for me. Easy for you to say. That would be great. I'm not even seeing specifically where it's located in the O&amp;M. Owner designated, owner designated, copy of constructions on the... Only authorized owner shall maintain or operate the drainage system. So, I presume that's the line that we have to amend?
Drainage components.
Yes. Is that the line? Only authorized personnel by the owner shall maintain or operate the drainage system? Is that the line that we have to amend?
No, I think it's, you're talking about inspections.
That's correct, but I don't see anything in here that's names the person, and I could be wrong because I, just reading it now, where it states the person that's going to fulfill this obligation.
It says the first paragraph, last sentence, the owner or designated representative will be responsible for maintenance and operation of the drainage. And these are the maintenance requirements.
Yes, so the owner or designated representative. So we can define owner or designated representative as an engineer or someone qualified to do such inspection and maintenance.
Correct. Yeah, so it'd be the owner or designated representative, which shall be a registered engineer or qualified professional responsible for...
That would be engineer or qualified professional. If I am asked to ask to make a motion, I may ask for help.
You're going to use this as the amended?
Right. Got you.
You had some amendments?
Yes.
Ron has made amendments to that document, and that will be due at this time.
Okay. A comment and a question. The comment, just so I understand it, is that the initiation of this project in terms of application and review started with the, the plan review meeting. Recommendations were made by various people in various departments in our community, all of which have been complied with with the addition to Ed Pesci's report. The only, the only entity that you have not yet been before is the Conservation Commission, and that's scheduled for tomorrow night. So whatever we do here in terms of our vote should also be subject to approval of the project by the conservation?
Yep. No, we have no problem with that.
Okay, fine. That's, that's all I have.
And then I would just, as the board usually does, if the conservation requires any changes to the plans, that we would have to come back?
Yes, good. So I was thinking of this the other, last night. So historically, the motions include something to the effect, like you just said, that any change to these plans would require the applicant to come back to this board. Now, what happens if the board, if the Conservation Commission asks you to do a mitigation plan, which is not part of our plan approval? You then change the plans for a mitigation plan? You add shrubs, you, whatever, and do you feel that's a change to our plans? You do?
I would say that I would come back under the, the bylaw has a provision for, you know, you're well aware of this now from me, these minor modifications. So I said something like a landscape plan could be administratively approved by the board.
But you would, you believe it would still have to come back to this board, even though it's an inclusion of a new plan?
What do you mean inclusion?
Well, because you go to Conservation and say, we want a mitigation plan. And so you draft a new plan, which is not part of our plan set.
Right.
So does that mean you're modifying or changing our plans?
The sheets one and two by CLM, which are in that document, are the mitigation and landscape plans.
Well, but let's say you make sheet, let's say your last sheet is 10. Let's say you make sheet 11 for conservation, heading conservation plan. I mean, I'm just asking this for you and other reasons.
Aren't we conditioning it already by what Conservation is requesting?
Well, this says it's...
This is a little bit different question he's asking.
Yeah, so this is, historically, the motion says any change to our plans or our pool, let's say our plans, will require the applicant to come back to this board.
I agree with that.
He now adds a... Another page to this, because Conservation says, we want to have a mitigation, page 12, that clearly depicts wetland lines of, I'm just trying to get yours, your agreement to the fact that that would be, the statement I'm looking for is, yes, that would be a change in the plans, even though they're not included.
You could say it's a, a change to the plan set that's been approved by the board.
Right, and I agree that it could be a minor modification. We'll know until we see it.
Correct.
That's if they do change it.
Correct.
But it would require you to come back.
Yep, understood. I have no problem with that.
I see that question being asked in, in a lot of applications.
Anybody else?
I guess I would just, I'm just buttressing what Charlie had said. You know, we did go from site plan review. Site plan review has the fire department, the police department, DPW, Conservation Commission, border health, town planner. I know Mr. Bondi was at that meeting as a representative of the public and member of the board, so it was well, well-reviewed by the various department heads.
Right.
And David, I didn't want to forget David.
Yeah. We're not going to read these in, but there is a, it'll go into the record. Plan review recommendations dated June 6. Additional to the town planner comments, they're all bullet points. They're all included in the proposed motion. There's also the two-page letter from Evan Lera.
Yep.
Very detailed. All of that is incorporated into the motion. So this is all going in there.
You got that all? All town departments?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So you guys are killing.
All right. Anybody else?
Nope.
That's all for the motion.
Okay. Before we go to public comments, why don't we read in the comments from the different boards, and then we'll open it up to public comments.
You have those in front of you? I'm not sure I have all of them, Charlie.
Yeah, let's see, I got...
Border Health just had it.
Yeah. I got more paper here than...
Border Health doesn't have anything.
Thank you. Yeah. Charlie, I got them right here.
Okay, I, I have conservation right here, Johnson.
Charlie, in case you don't.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Bill. Okay, conservation comments. Daniel Kent, Monday, June 26, 2023, to Mary Ann Romero, relative to 21 Frog Pond and 352 Mashpee Neck. I will review the plans and update the comment tomorrow, and tomorrow is the meeting of conservation. Health agent, dated June 27, 2023. I don't see that there's any comment from the...
I got border health comments, and I don't even see, I just listed, even listed...
No border health.
We didn't even see no comment. There's just nothing.
There's no border health regarding the septic?
No. I don't miss.
No. No.
Border health, and it's not even listed.
One that you...
You said there's no comment, but... I said it on page numbers.
Okay. Well, you know, they were part of the plan review.
Correct.
So there's no...
It's all in there.
No independence, all right.
Anything else there?
I have a comment from, from Evan, which is also part of the plan review information.
Is it this two-page typed letter? We're not going to read that in, but...
No.
You know, I can read the...
We'll leave that as part of the...
Want me to read this part of it? Okay, from, this goes back to June 5, 2023, from Evan.
This is May 23.
Lera, to Mary Ann Romero. Under my recommendations for accessory uses, I forgot to contemplate the use of the 352 Mashpee Neck property as offices for the Marina. I see no issue with the use of a portion of the dwelling as an office. Any building code or Title V related issues relative to the use, I will defer to the commissioner and health agent. I want to be sure that any recommendations to the Board of Appeals to restrict accessory uses does not include a restriction on the establishment of an office for the Marina. Please notify Attorney Corain of this amendment to my previous email as well as Chair Bush. And the only other thing I have is the, from the, from the harbor master, Robert Tomano, June 9, 2023, to Mary Ann Romero. Mary Ann, we have had no issues whatsoever at the Marina itself. The staff as well as management run everything very smoothly, and we work extremely well together. On busy weekends, I've never observed a single issue with regard to parking, potty-ing, or out-of-control patrons. I've observed staff managing the parking lot and the docks themselves. Any other questions or concern, please don't hesitate to reach out. That's it?
Okay. I'm looking at a letter from Evan Lera, town planner, dated May 23, to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Reference 352 Mashpee Neck Road slash 21 Frog Pond Close, special permit modification. It's two pages typed, but start of it says, upon review of the subject petition, I noted zoning-related conflicts that the, that impact the property owner's request related to additional parking area intended to serve the existing Marina. I've conferred with town council on the subject, and he has affirmed the planning department's opinion of the facts. One, subject parcels are held in separate ownership. 21 Frog Pond Close is owned by 21 Frog Pond Close LLC, and 352 Mashpee Neck Road is owned by the trustee of the Shoestring Bay Nominee Trust II. Number two, Mashpee zoning bylaw 174-25-H8 in parentheses prohibits parking lots in the R3 zoning district that are not accessory to another principal use on the same lot. We've talked about that already. As submitted under the existing circumstances, there's no legal basis upon which the ZBA could modify special permit to include 352 Mashpee Neck Road. This was back in May, though, so all of this has been addressed. If you'd like to comment on that?
Yeah, so when we talk to town planner, town planner's recommendation would that be, we would have to put the both lots in same ownership. We have done that. We provided the board with a copy of the deed. Now both properties are owned by the 21 Frog Pond Close LLC, so that removes that concern of the, of town planner.
I have one more email from Evan, dated June 14. It's an email, and it was to Mary Ann. And it says, I am satisfied with the plan revisions, ingress and egress to Mashpee Neck... ingress and egress to Mashpee Neck Lot Internal. Screening shows eastern red cedar. Properties are held in common. All of my other comments pertain to conditions that aren't shown on the plan, but listed in the written decision. The board may choose to accept, modify, or reject any of my proposed conditions. Please ensure that any and all that they choose to accept are appropriately and clearly noted in the written decision. Thanks, Evan. And this was dated two weeks ago, so. I don't have anything else. Anybody before we open it up? Okay, why don't we open it up to public hearing again? If you've already spoken, please don't speak again and there'll be no giving minutes away. So whoever's first, raise your hand, come right up, sir. Just give us your name and address for the record. Happy to have your comments.
Hi, my name, excuse me, let me line up with this microphone a little bit, okay? My name is Mike Fox and I live on Frog Pond Close. And I did write this letter to the town manager and he said he was going to distribute it to you. Have you seen it?
We've got a bunch of emails that I'm going to read.
This is a, this is a letter that was actually directed to Rodney Collins.
Okay. I'll find out afterwards, but go right ahead.
Okay, but he suggested very strongly that I read it into the record, okay?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Dear Mr. Collins, thank you for the opportunity to comment with respect to the application before the Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals, requesting a modification of an existing special permit of the marina and expand to include the adjacent property at 352 Mashpee Neck Road. My family and I have maintained a summer residence at 63 Frog Pond Close for over 25 years and thoroughly enjoyed our time there and have also been avid boaters during this period. We are very familiar with the operation and substantial growth of the facility from a family marina to a sprawling enterprise. I will try to be brief in my comments, but I have some significant issues with this proposal. They include the following. One, the zoning board of appeals has not received input from many neighbors off Frog Pond Close. I was never informed nor were many of my neighbors informed by the applicant of this application. There was no consultation with us or any attempt by him to obtain our input. This unfortunately was the same approach taken by the applicant in more than doubling the size of the marina to 154 slips a short time ago. It is very disappointing that the applicant has consistently ignored the concerns of his neighbors as he has pushed forward with ongoing rapid and substantial expansion of the marina. Two, why does the routing of traffic to Frog Pond Close solve the traffic issue? In his testimony to the zoning board of appeals on June 14th, the attorney for the applicant, Christopher Corrane, stated that he had alleviated concerns for the traffic on Mashpee Neck Road by providing for all access through Frog Pond Close. I don't think this makes any sense. First, what gives Mr. Corrane and the applicant the right to assume that they can unilaterally choose to direct traffic over Frog Pond Close, a private road, without consulting its owners and obtaining their input and permission? Frog Pond Close is in fact a much narrower road than Mashpee Neck Road with curves and blind spots. This is clearly a health and safety issue. For all residents of Frog Pond Close, this is not to suggest that Mashpee Neck Road is an appropriate point of access either. But I find it interesting that again, the applicant purposely presented this alternative, knowing that none of the owners of the road, including myself, had been made aware of this option by the applicant. I would have assumed that a good neighbor dealing in good faith would pursue a constructive dialogue with those obviously most affected by this application, but this was clearly not the case. Three, why is the approval of this application being given serious consideration given the health and safety and environmental concerns surrounding the applicant's business? I have personally seen the marina grow from a family marina of less than 70 slips to a very large enterprise of 154 slips. The number of slips, however, does not really measure the impact of the marina on Shoestring Bay and the local marine environment. Under previous owners, the boats at the marina were generally small and basic. Today, the boats of the marina are generally much larger with multiple engines and significantly more horsepower, further adding to the contamination of the bay. As one who has lived on Shoestring Bay for a long period of time and personally observed its demise, I believe that it is absolutely imperative that we protect the waterway from any further damage. Mr. Leeden stated in his testimony on June 14th to the Z B A that we don't have a parking problem if we continue to do what we're doing. We have not lost any customers over this. He also states anecdotally that this is a potential issue only six or eight Saturdays during the summer. If the applicant's operation and economic return on the marina will not, by his own admission, suffer any adverse consequences by the rejection of this application, but the health and safety of local residents will be protected or enhanced by such action, then it's very clear to me that this application should not be approved. The marina's scale is already too large for the neighborhood, including Pirate's Cove. Four, while additional parking requested in the application clearly is not necessary, it serves as a Trojan horse for additional storage of boats and additional revenue and profit for the applicant. The marina is clearly first and foremost an enterprise designed to maximize profits with little regard for any adverse impact on our community. It has itself attested to this fact by squeezing in 154 slips into a relatively small footprint while dominating and detracting from the natural beauty of Shoestring Bay to fully optimize its economic returns. This expansion of available slips while approved by the Z B A was done with minimal, if any, consideration by the applicant of the neighbors most affected by such engine. As detailed above, Mr. Leeden has stated that his additional parking request is not necessary for the ongoing operation of the marina. It would therefore seem that Mr. Leeden's real objection, objective in acquiring the lot adjacent to the marina and bringing it under the umbrella of a special existing permit is to increase his boat's storage capacity by a minimum of 32 additional boats and reap additional profits from hauling, storage, shrink wrapping, fueling, and providing other additional services with respect to these boats. He in fact stated in his June 14th testimony that he has a very significant demand from his existing customers for such storage. The transportation of these additional boats, many of which will be quite large, presents an unnecessary risk to the health and safety of the residents of Frog Pond Close, Mashpee Neck Road, Pirate's Cove, and all adjacent neighborhoods. Shrink wrapped boats on stands surrounded by a stockade fence will further detract from the Mashpee Neck Road landscape and environment, including Frog Pond itself, which is located directly across from the marina and will also affect neighborhood property values. In summary, due to the critical considerations above, this request to modify the existing special permit of the marina should be rejected under the applicable statute since if approved, it would clearly have a significant adverse impact on the health and safety of the citizens of Mashpee while adversely impacting traffic flows, traffic safety, local waterways, and neighboring properties. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, I spoke last time, but, um, excuse me, may I?
At the end, if we have some time. Okay, at the end, if we have some time, I'm going to make sure that we get everybody that hasn't spoken. Okay, we're not going to share minutes. We're not going to share minutes.
I'm not sharing.
What is your, what is your name and address? Yeah, we have your letter and you've already spoken, but thank you.
This is something different.
Okay, I'm going to have anybody that hasn't spoken. Come right up.
Hello, my name is Bill Lovely. I live at 45 Frog Pond Close. This is to kind of piggyback on what Mike Fox just iterated. The town planner provided comments to the planning, to the planning board. And one of his comments was that the applicant should demonstrate the necessity of the required number of parking spots. And I don't, I've sat through the meetings. I've never heard him justify 34 parking spots. In fact, Mike just stated that he said over time, over time, that he can operate just the way he is. So I don't know if the, uh, if the zoning board has considered the, the number of parking spots that he's asking for. Because it's, it's his onus to prove that, that he needs those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No.
I'd like to ask one question.
No, come up and if you would, and give us your name and address for the record.
I'm Elaine Coronilla, at 23 Buccanee Way, Mashpee. I'd like to know how many of the boats look owners or renters, whatever you consider them. How many of them are from Mashpee? How many from?
We'll find out.
Okay.
Afterwards, and I'll have you address that afterwards. What was the last name on that? You spelled? Oh, I got it. Okay, anybody else? We're gonna, at the end, I'm gonna try and.
Okay, you guys are in the meeting, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, after all the comments, he's going to address it rather than up, down, up, down. Sure. Come right up. The person behind you.
Hi, my name is David Capitosto. I live at 171 Captain's Row in Mashpee. In previous meetings, Mr. Leeden has mentioned about a purchase and sales agreement that he has with the previous owner about not doing rack storage at this parking lot, all right? Since he has transferred the ownership from one entity to another, I'd just like to know, could he expand on how that still affects us? All right, can he now do rack storage? We don't know. We haven't seen the purchase and sales agreement. We don't know what was in there. All right, and now that it's changed hands, is that purchase and sales agreement still an enforceable thing? We don't know. I think this is something that you should look into. And I think that we need a bylaw in this town with no rack storage.
Okay. Thank you. What's the last name? Come right up.
I'm Mary Fox, 63 Frog Pond Close. I have a question. I just wanted to know, um, I have this question that a neighbor of mine gave me today and there's some question about One Water Marine Holdings. I just wondered if they have any relationship to what's going on here? Is this just a family business with Tim Leeden? Or is there other people involved in this? One Water Marine Holdings being one of them? Because I see back, way back 60, I don't know when they were, um, well, several years back, they were acquired, they acquired Boson's Marine. They're a big conglomerate that goes around. And they have quite, according to my neighbor, they have quite a few marinas that they manage. So I just wanted to know if they have any, um, what is, if any, is their involvement in this project? And I also want to know if there are any board members or family members of, on boards or various boards that were members of the marina or have any relationship to any holding companies that might be involved in this project? I come here and I'm very concerned because I feel like almost it's a done deal listening to everyone here. And I really feel that you really need to listen to the residents of their concerns of the environment. I live in Frog Pond Close. We've lived there over 25 years. Since the marina has expanded, it was a small marina when we were there, owned by Bob Sciosari. It's expanded to 154 slips. Many cars coming up and down our street. They don't necessarily come down Mashpee Neck Road. We are a private road. We have nine other residents besides the marina. We are responsible for maintaining the road, the wear, the tear. We have had people put signs out, children, you know, because they're concerned of the speed of the, of the cars going in and out of the marina. Not only are there cars, there have been golf carts coming from various neighborhoods up and down our street, past our house, not coming up Mashpee Neck Road. So they're coming down public roads through Quaker Run, through Lighthouse Lane, through Frog Pond Close, entering the marina. And I have actually spoke to, um, some of the people on the golf carts. Not only are they adults, they're children, they're not even of age, turning into the marina. Now, I don't know what that was about, whether, but I, I just don't know what that's about. But that's a safety issue right there, okay? The other thing is conservation. I spoke to them today. I have been calling, I called Drew several times. I want, I knew when this expanded to 154, no one in our neighborhood was notified. You have to know that. Not one person on Frog Pond Close, our private road, like they were coming through your driveways, all of your driveways. Not one call, not one card, not, nothing to the neighborhood. Now, if you're family oriented, we're families in that neighborhood. They're families in Pirate's Cove. We're families. And this impacts not only our neighborhoods, the cars, the, the boats and the trailers come up Simon Narrows, they come all the way in several neighborhoods. But our road is a private road. So would anybody like to have 154 boats traveling in and out and cars in their private driveway through their private land? Would you, any of you? This is how it's impacted our neighborhood and it's dangerous. Furthermore, the conservation aspect, I talked to Dan today because I didn't get back to Drew, I didn't hear back from him, but, um, I know when this did expand, I went down there and I noticed that all the shrubs and trees, many have been taken down on the embankment, abutting Frog Pond Close, and also on the Houston property. Now, I talked to Tim many years, a couple of years back. That was supposed to be re-landscaped. To this day in time, it hasn't been re-landscaped. I see the trees being pruned up. I see some with tags on them, but none of that has been done. Furthermore, there's a dip in the road there. There's a conservation frog pond across the street from the entrance to the marina. It's conservation land. When it rains, there's enormous amount of sand that ends up right by the entrance to the marina. It sits there. If you come by in the summer or if it's been raining, go by on a rainy day. All the boats and cars come in there. It's never swept away and it's swept into, well, his side and to the conservation side. So there's a conservation issue. As far as the waterway goes, Shoestring Bay, I can honestly say last year has been the most horrible year of boat traffic coming through Shoestring Bay. We are polluted. When we lived there 25 years ago, we could swim there. My kids would swim across to Katu. It's dirty, it's polluted. It smells in July. It's loaded with algae blooms. This boat extra traffic, they're not just going out to Nantucket Sound to the spit. They're coming up and down, cruising up and down Frog Pond, up and down Shoestring Bay and speeding. We've asked the harbor master to replace the no wake signs that were there that haven't. that were there, that haven't been there the past three or four years. And they're supposed to do that. But that doesn't resolve the issue of the waterways and the pollution and the algae blooms and the constant run-up of these boats. It doesn't seem like anybody's respecting Shoestring Bay.
Thank you.
Maybe they don't even know what a no-wake sign is when it goes up. Because in Massachusetts, you don't have to take a boating course. I'm from Connecticut originally, you have to take a boating course.
Thank you.
So that's, I mean, these are my concerns. And I'm very, I'm just very saddened by all this. And I am not for variance. I'd like to see it stop. I'd like to see it stop. I'd like to see some, some, listening to the neighborhood and the impact. And listening, and looking at the environment, and looking at what's happened to the waterways in our town. And we need to protect that, we really do. And we're not doing that.
We do, we do need to move on.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, who's next? Anybody else? Okay, come up. You'll be the last speaker, I guess. And you, Beth Hennessy, I see you spoke before.
Yes. Yes, and in this petition, there are things that have already been addressed, including Mr. Liedem's remarks at the last hearing that he didn't really need the parking, he was fine the way he was. It was just a convenience for his customers. But I agree with what Mr. Fox said, that this is a Trojan horse. Because I watched the January eighth, two thousand and twenty, hearing where the one-fifty-four was approved. And at that hearing, Mr. Liedem indicated that the expansion at that time was the first of several phases that he intended to do. I understand that he has to have seventy-seven parking spaces to meet the town requirement. And those seventy-seven parking spaces are currently in the lower lot. I understand that he wants thirty-two or thirty-five more spaces on the upper lot. And what I don't want to see is him offloading the, some of the thirty-five spaces from the lower lot to the upper lot, to still have his seventy-seven as required by the town. And then thus freeing up space in the lower lot to construct a building which, at the January sixth, two thousand and twenty, meeting, he indicated that he intended to do. I don't want to see that the commercialization of that marina in our neighborhood. So, in this petition, we are asking for a special condition that parking spaces, since his justification for asking for the parking was that he needs overflow, that parking spaces one through seventy-seven must remain in the lower lot. And once those are filled, then he can give spaces seventy-eight through one-ten at the upper lot. And any violation of that, because at the January eighth hearing in two thousand and twenty, there was an issue and a promise from Mr. Liedem and his attorneys relative to permitting some sheds on the property, that was never fulfilled. We are over three years later. So, to put some teeth into this condition, I have said, any violation of any terms in the special permit that may be issued by this board constitutes the owner's agreement that he will cede ownership of the property formerly known as three-fifty-two Mashpee Neck Road to the town of Mashpee for the purpose of creating a public space. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, one final call. Anybody else before we hear some answers? Yeah. Should we close the public comment section of this, at this point?
I think he needs to answer those questions. And then we need to close everything.
Okay.
Thank you. So I want to address the last comment and one of the other comments relative to the rack storage. So, we have come before this board stating that we will not do any rack storage. And if the board were to approve this project, they could put that as a condition of this special permit. So that would certainly have much more teeth than any purchase and sale agreement.
If I were asked to make a motion, it would include the following statement. No boat rack storage will be allowed. That's in perpetuity unless they amend this permit and have to...
That is correct, so no issue with that. As to the first part of Ms. Hennessy's comment, we would not have any problem with a condition that stated that this was overflow only, that all, that the first seventy-seven had to be filled before you could start using parking on the upper level. However, I will not agree to a condition that says a violation cedes ownership of the property.
So state your, so overflow parking only?
Overflow parking only, so my...
Only to be used once the seventy-seven are filled.
Once the parking on twenty-one Frog Pond Close has to be used up first, then you can use the overflow.
So when they start to pull out of the seventy-seven?
Correct.
The new cars go into?
Right.
All right, so overflow parking only. And so this parking area can only be utilized once the seventy-seven lot, existing parking lot is full?
Yes, on twenty-one Frog Pond Close, if you want to.
And, and...
And if they become vacant, they have to be refilled before you go out.
After they start it, it's gonna be refilled.
Well, we're not gonna move cars down.
What?
Yeah, we're not gonna, if there's a parked car already up there, we wouldn't be moving it down.
No, I'm not asking you to. But if a spot opens up...
A new car comes in, yes.
They don't go up there.
Correct.
They fill the spot that was vacated on the seventy-seven. I think that's fair.
That's fine. I don't think it's a big deal. And then, I guess the only other thing I would...
Could we stop with that one, please? If someone were asked to ask me to make this motion, could we make sure that I got this right, please?
Yeah.
I only have overflow parking only.
Correct.
Fill in from there, please.
So there's currently seventy-seven spaces?
Yeah. Right, can I just, just from an employee standpoint, this is overflow parking. But I just asked that, when this worked out by the board and my attorney, that I can see things being very difficult. The seventy-seven get filled, some people go up. Ten people leave from the lower lot. Someone comes in and says, "You parked there first because I see spaces down here." I mean, there has to be some...
We want you to do your best to make sure...
Yeah, that's all I'm saying. This is what this is. The seventy-seven spaces are staying, they're being used.
I don't think anybody from the Mashpee Police is gonna be in the trees looking to make sure.
Well, but there'd be a million calls to him.
We're looking for a guarantee from you.
You can see it coming.
I think you make best effort to continue to fill the lower lot before you utilize the upper lot.
So, this is overflow parking only, and it should be utilized only as such as when the seventy-seven lot, parking lot is full, this parking lot can then be utilized. And I think from a standpoint of one person leaving there, the seventy-seven, and then all of a sudden...
Somebody pulls in, they go to the lower lot.
I don't think you can go anywhere near that conversation because you just can't oversee that. You can't have a guard, an attendant standing there all day long.
That's all I'm saying.
I get it.
A practical standpoint, I mean, you make best effort.
I think the minutes of this meeting are part of the meeting, right? So it's important for the people to honestly to understand that, that's very important. But I think it's also important for you to understand that if twenty people leave the seventy-seven, and they, for that day, they've left the seventy-seven parking lot, you need to say to that overflow, hey, get over there, right?
They're on their boat.
Well, all right, no, no.
You can't move their car, they're on their boat.
Well, that's a problem.
No, I don't think it's a problem.
Then they leave, into the dump.
Not at all.
So what you just said, correct me if I'm wrong, is so twenty, fifty people leave the seventy-seven area parking lot. So now it's less than half full.
Right.
The overflow parking is also full, or almost full. And the residents say, "Wait a second, you can't do that."
This is how it's gonna work.
No, no, no.
When, if somebody comes in and there's something available in the seventy-seven, that's where they park.
Yeah. We take control when people leave.
Unless there's no spaces on the lower lot.
Right.
As people leave, they're gonna just refill the lower lot.
How does that, how do you, how do you state that motion?
You just did...
There's no overflow, overflow parking only. And refilling of spaces...
Refilling of spaces in the lower lot.
On the lower lot.
Become available.
Refilling of spaces, what?
As they become available.
First.
As they open up.
If available.
On the lower lot first, if it has available. So you're saying the following, overflow parking only. This lot is overflow parking only. Overflow parking only, and refills?
Yep, applicant will use best efforts to refill.
Lower lot, now spaces become available.
Correct.
Get that? Please, please, you're out of order. We're done with that. We're having a discussion. Please.
Well, let's work it out. We'll, I'll be...
Go ahead.
So, we'll get, we'll get, we'll get the lower.
So, this lot shall be overflow parking only, that's the beginning, correct. The refilling of the seventy, of this lot shall be only upon...
Full capacity of the lower.
Full capacity of the existing seventy-seven lot.
Right.
Right? Okay.
People move from...
Yeah, right, you can't do that.
The upper lot to the lower lot.
No.
They're not there to move, they're on their boat.
Exactly.
We're trying to, you know, do our best to satisfy the concerns.
One of the concerns I heard, I want you to address, is the private road.
Well, the marina uses it now. I mean...
We're, we're one of the owners of the road.
We're one of the owners of the road.
There's only one lot from Mashpee Neck Road to our property. So you pass one empty lot between Mashpee Neck Road and Frog Pond Close. And quite a few years ago, we were asked by a neighbor who's here to do our best to direct anyone leaving our property back onto Mashpee Neck Road instead of up and around the balance of the private part of Frog Pond Close. We did that immediately, we put up a sign, "No right turn out of the parking lot", which would be going into the private area. And we continued to ask people, monitor that. We really see very, very little of it, except for some people that live up that way. We don't, if there's some of it going on and we spot it, we ask them to please be courteous and don't do that. We've been doing that for years.
So you're directing traffic?
Directing traffic across one vacant lot on the private road, which we're one of the owners of, over to Mashpee Neck Road.
So you're not directing them up?
No, never have. Never have.
So if they're doing it, they're doing it on their own?
They're doing it on their own, and if we find them doing it, we ask them not to do it.
Right, and you really have no right to tell them what to do?
We do the best we can. We've, neighbors, there were a lot of comments about that we've never been interactive with the neighborhood. I don't think that that's a really, that's a fair comment at all. You know, I've been there, I don't want you into all that, but we've been a good neighbor and doing our best. I was there since nineteen eighty-five, using the marina personally, and then owning it since two thousand and one, twenty-two years. And it's always been, I'm one of the neighbors. I live in town.
Please.
We own the property.
Let's be courteous.
That makes us a neighbor, we own the property. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I don't mean to get defensive, but it's...
We don't, we don't need this discussion back.
I apologize, I apologize.
I don't want this to get out of hand.
One, one point of clarification. You're not increasing any number of boats in the slips.
No, we're not.
Is that correct? It's one-fifty-four, it stays at one-fifty-four. So there's no additional boat traffic?
No.
It's strictly a parking.
Right, and I think town planner made a good point of that. He said, you know, if you're expanding the number of slips, that's really where you'd be worried about increasing traffic.
Exactly.
No, that's not the case here. There was a question from the audience about the, how many owners are Mashpee residents? Well, you know, we don't have an exact number. I think Tim estimates that it is more than half of the slip owners or slip users are Mashpee residents.
Okay, I'm not sure that really matters.
It doesn't, but somebody asked him...
It's a business.
Right.
You can't reflect...
It's like who goes to the restaurant, I mean.
Right.
Somebody asked him, we're, you know, want to be open.
We have people from Kootuwa.
You're on the line.
Mr. Chairman, they also, somebody in the audience asked, what board members have any interest in this particular property?
Does anybody here?
I don't own a boat.
I own a boat, but it doesn't go to the marina, it's never been to the marina.
I have nothing to do with any of it.
I haven't paid a dime to this gentleman for slips.
Anybody else?
Nope.
Just...
Take no offense, but I have no interest in boats.
Good move, actually.
I like friends with boats. It's pretty good of them owning boats.
Oh, there was, I'll voluntarily bring something up. Someone brought up the name One Water. I used to own Boson's Marine. That's fairly well-known, I volunteered that to the information before. I sold that business in two thousand and eighteen. And frankly, that freed up my time and capabilities to turn around and get going on, on the improvements that we're doing at the marina. There is no association of ownership in any way, shape, or form between the company that bought Boson's Marine and the marina. I'm a hundred percent owner with my wife. We are, have been. They were separately owned, separate businesses. They've always been separate businesses, a separate ownership. My wife and I own it. And we hope that as we improve it and our boys grow up, that it stays in the family. And that's the goal of still putting effort into this point I am in my career. So it's pretty straightforward.
Any final comments? I'm gonna take a few thirty-second comments from the board, and then I'm going to move into some letters that were written that people haven't spoke about. And then there's more to talk about. We've got a lot more to go. And this is a full agenda. We've got two pages of hearings. I mean, it's already hour and fifteen minutes. So any final comments?
I would just say that I do believe, I know some comment about, you know, the parking. I believe my client has adequately demonstrated the need for this parking, you know, based on his experience with the, with the marina, the back and forth of people going, and the nature of the use of the boats nowadays.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thirty seconds, raise your hand, come right up. Who's out there that would like to speak? Come up. Give me your name again, if you would. Make it very brief, if you would, thirty seconds. Make your point.
I got it. I think the comment that if you've got one-hundred-and-fifty-two slips, this addition, these additional boats will not, you know, increase traffic. Of course they won't. Because if you're stirring additional thirty-two boats on the land...
Now that is true.
What?
There's already one-hundred-and-fifty-two slips as it is right now.
No, 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 I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying on the, I'm saying on the new lot, there'll be an additional, he's asking for an additional thirty-two boats. Right now, those one-hundred-and-fifty-two...
No, 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 that is not correct.
It's one-hundred-and-fifty-four slips, I think, is it not?
And it's one-hundred-and-fifty-four.
Right, and there's not one more slip allowed.
Right.
There's no more boats.
There's no more boats. It's only for parking for the existing slips.
And it's, there's no storage in the summer at all.
So, so what he's saying is, he will not offer storage to anyone who does not have a slip?
That is what I said.
Correct.
Correct.
Right, and there's no storage during the summer. Winter storage...
And there's no rack storage.
There'll be no taking out, moving in. That was one of my big concerns.
We answered that the last year.
Right off the bat, I was concerned about starting store boats, put them in, call up, "Hey, have my boat ready." I didn't want that. That was addressed right from the start.
Okay, but let me just, let me just ask...
So, I'm with you on that.
Okay, just, just, just a clarification, maybe I don't understand. So, the additional, he said that he wants the ability in last meeting to store up to thirty-two boats there, right? So during the winter, right now, you've got a certain amount of boats that are on the lower level. He's gonna store an additional thirty-two up there, okay? So to me, that's basically an additional thirty-two boats that are gonna be stored that are not there now. It's, yeah, I mean, wanted to ask him. I mean, because he said in the meeting on June, on...
We did speak about this.
Yeah. No, but he said in the meeting that he has tremendous demand for this, and he could use this space for storage. That's why I feel really, it's a Trojan horse to get the boats in there, okay?
Thank you. Anybody else? Come right up. Thirty seconds, if you would.
Thank you. The part about the language with the lower lot, um, I think if you say something like, the lower lot, the seventy-seven spots on the lower lot meet the town requirements for minimum number of parking spaces. And that is designated for that, that lower lot.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come right up. Take your time. And your name and address for the record.
Ron Meyerowitz, Pirate's Cove.
I'm sorry, your last name was what?
What?
Last name was?
Meyerowitz. I'm Mrs. Mary.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
It seems like the owner of the lot said it didn't affect his business one way or another if he doesn't get it. So why not just drop it? Leave it like the way it is, he doesn't need it. And another thing.
No conversation. Thank you.
Another thing, uh, so many boats, you couldn't put a kayak in here anymore, it's all full. And I'm wondering how we got it dredged? Would we can't get one teaspoon out of Pirate's Cove, out of the Mashpee River? Okay?
Thank you, Ron. Come right up. And again, you are.
I'm Mary Fox, sixty-three Frog Pond Close.
Got it.
Um, we've had issues with music playing all night from the Port Ajani area, uh, which we've complained about. We've also had issue with the dumpster. All the screening is taken down on Frog Pond Close, a great deal of it, it's never been replaced. So we can see right through there now. A dumpster at one point was parked right on their property, but abutting the road was very much an eyesore and smelly. Uh, it's been, was there for good over, well over a month. And, um, I had addressed this with Mr. Ledham, and it wasn't very pleasant. Um, I was just concerned because we live on the road. We did not want to look at a dumpster or smell it. So those are health issues that I'm bringing to your attention, as well as, um, the conservation issue, and I hope that screening goes up on Frog Pond Close at some point. It still hasn't, although he had told me it would.
Thank you.
Not one twig has been put in. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Ron, do you make a motion to close?
Certainly. Like to make a motion that we close public comment uh, on the modification of the special permit for twenty-one Frog Pond Close and three fifty-two Mashpee Neck Road trustee, uh, Timothy Leland, Ledham, trustee of Shoestring Bay Nominee Trust.
Second.
All right, Bill seconds, Charlie, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, the public comment section is closed. All right. We have got some letters to read. Okay. I think we have one from Chris Resmini, I believe it's pronounced.
Charlie, have these?
I don't know, I'll leave this one. After that, we have Louise McDivitt. All right, so this is from Chris, as I said, dated Monday, June twenty-sixth. That's to Mary Ann Romero. Greetings, Mary Ann. I'm ready to express my support of the proposed parking lot expansion at the Mashpee Neck Marina. It's my understanding that the lot will allow for much-needed additional parking along with more winter storage space. I live in Pirate's Cove and have heard these are concerns related to the possibility of the gas tanks of the winterized boats exploding, to which I'd like to point out that many, many residents in the Cove over winter at least one boat on their property, and in my thirteen years here, I've yet to hear or witness about any pot fire caused by a tank malfunction. Owners utilizing private storage facilities must have their boats prepped for winterization to ensure the continued safe storage and operation of that vehicle. It seems to me that this extra attention would minimize any risk of explosion. Additionally, it seems ironic that the subject of the unsightliness caused by boat storage would be an issue, as there are some properties in the Cove that house one to three boats on site, some of which are derelict, most of which remain uncovered throughout the year. This combined with stagnant rainwater creates prime mosquito breeding grounds and poses a health hazard and a threat of triple E and West Nile virus. A property, a properly stored boat reduces these issues, uh, as would a final toll to the boat graveyard for some of these boats. Lastly, a word with regret regard to increased traffic concerns. As we all know, Mashpee Neck Road empties into the public boat launch, which results in an increase in foot and motor vehicle traffic this time of year. We can't ignore that. This makes for an unattractive and tricky exit from the Cove. The parking lot expansion will not add to this traffic situation as the boats and their owners will be housed off-street. We all need to remember that this is a recreational area that is appreciated and utilized by the local residents. We should be grateful for our quintessential Cape Cod location with its beautiful water views, Marina included, and our ability to use and enjoy the national resources around us. Respectfully submitted, Chris Resmini, twenty-eight Musket Lane. Do you have Louise McDevitts? By chance, Charlie?
The date is six, seven, twenty twenty-three. Hi, Mary Ann, I would like to add the following items that we discussed and that were added to the plan review regarding twenty-one Frog Pond Close and three fifty-two Mashpee Neck Road. Noise, no functions, weddings, parties, group activities will be held on this property. Light, low lighting in the parking lot will be initiated. The floodlights originating from the dock area should be evaluated. My other concern is accountability. If any of the conditions listed in the permit are breached, what will be the process for corrective action? Thank you, Louise McDevitt, uh, three Treasure Lane, Mashpee.
Okay, the next one is John, I believe it's guilty or something like that, I, sorry, I butchered the name. Okay, and this one is to Evan Lyra, dated June thirteenth. Mr. Lyra, I'm writing in opposition to the plan to convert the residential property at three fifty-two Mashpee Neck Road into a commercial industrial parking lot and boat storage area as proposed by the current owner, Timothy Lee. We would like to officially state our opposition to the proposed intentions for the following reasons. This is a residential home and should remain that way. Allowing this request would set a very dangerous precedent within this neighborhood and across Mashpee proper. The number of parking spots allowed should be commensurate with what is allowed for this size residential home at three fifty-two Mashpee Neck Road. This proposal clarify, uh, clearly benefits the owner of the Marina and their paying customers while ignoring the permanent residents of the neighborhood. Uh, I invested in beauty, quiet, and safe neighborhood as a place to raise our family and ultimately enjoy retirement. The expansion of the boat Marina and now proposed uh, boat Marina parking lot and boat storage benefits the boat Marina financially at the expense of the neighborhood uh, it is doing business in. As stated previously, we are opposed to this proposal and request that the residential property is cut off. Oh, remain a residential property with no parking lot and no additional lighting. Thank you for considering our objection to the proposed intention. John, I believe again, guilty, I'm not sure. One oh three Captain's Row.
I have one more here, John, um, from Ariel Stowe, ninety-three Captain's Row, uh, Mashpee. Uh, dear Mr. Lyra and department heads, I am writing to express my opposition as a nearby homeowner to the proposed conversion of the residential property at three fifty-two Mashpee Neck Road into a commercial property containing a parking lot and boat storage. I am against this development proposed by Timothy W. Ledham, the current owner, based on the permanent negative environment effects it will cause. Mashpee Neck is largely residential and includes a carefully protected river, woodland, forest, and a delicate waterfront environment. This development, if allowed to move forward, will be devastating to the environment and its residents. This area, while already struggling with annual, uh, alge hill blooms, will be further taxed with exponentially more toxic petroleum runoff, as well as demands on the separate system noise and light pollution and increased dangerous traffic. Furthermore, a large commercial parking lot with off-season boat storage in a quiet residential neighborhood is an absolute eyesore and a permanent one at that. The neighborhood will never be the same. For these reasons, Mr. Ledham's proposal will hurt the property values of all surrounding homes. On a personal note, I have been planning for my retirement at my home here in Mashpee Neck, and that would naturally include further investments in this neighborhood and the town of Mashpee. However, decisions such as allowing the expansion of the boat Marina and now the proposed boat Marina parking lot and boat storage do not seem to consider the effects on residents like myself and will serve to drive people away. Likewise, this decision will make me seriously reconsider a permanent move to Mashpee. It is clear that the only beneficiary of this development, if approved, is Mr. Ledham. I am opposed to this proposal and request that the residential property remain just that with no parking lot and no additional lighting. Thank you for your time and for considering my objection to the proposed development at three fifty-two Mashpee Neck Road, Mashpee. Ariel Stowe, ninety-three Captain's Row.
Okay, I have one here from Angela, I believe it's Patsios. Okay, it is dated June twenty-seventh. It's an email to Mary Ann Romero. Mashpee Neck Marina Parking. Good afternoon, Mary Ann. I'm sending this letter and one of the supporters of the parking proposed by Mashpee Neck Arena. I've been a resident of Pirate Cove for over thirty years and also a guest at the Marina. The plans proposed by Tim and team are sound and actually a welcome change. It will assist all those folks that transport guests back and forth the Marina and will cut down trips significantly. I'm not sure why folks think that this is an issue any more than parking on the side of the road, which by the way, is not really a parking area, but created for this activity only. And also, most folks keep their boats in their driveways uh, for the winter in the Cove. Again, having lived here over thirty years, a thoughtful plan has been laid out and should strongly be considered for the majority and not denied for the few who really do not have a great reason to says to bad, I guess, debate it. Thank you for your time and consideration. There's no address on this. Okay, do you have one from Ray maybe? Or Angela Pena? Anybody?
Angela, I don't, that was in my packet from last week, I believe, I didn't have it right back.
I get the right one here.
Would you, would you read Ray?
Uh, Ray T. Tral, forty-one Buccaneer Way, Mashpee, Mass., June first, twenty twenty-three, Mashpee's only board of appeals. Uh, I am a resident of Pirate's Cove and have been in conversation with several neighbors in the Mashpee Neck Marina management regarding Mashpee Neck Marina's request to allow parking at three fifty-two Mashpee Neck Road. Given that I am both a patron of the Marina and a resident of Pirate Cove, Pirate's Cove, I want to pass along my thoughts for your consideration while deciding on the Marina's request. As I understand the situation, there are two primary concerns from the Pirate, Pirate's Cove community. One, an increase in traffic at Mashpee Neck Road. Should a new entrance to the Marina be created at three fifty-two Mashpee Neck Road? And two, that parking lot would be aesthetically detract from the neighborhood. With respect to the parking entrance at three fifty-two Mashpee Neck Road, I will agree with the community members that this would create an adverse change in the traffic patterns. In discussion with the Marina management, they indicated that although the original plan was to use the Mashpee Neck Road entrance, they have adjusted their plans to the current Marina entrance to access the new parking area. Change in the plan would certainly remedy the traffic concerns as a pattern that would remain exactly as it is today. If the three fifty-two Mashpee Neck Road property entrance is limited to parking for just the Marina's, Marina manager, it will remain the same as when the property was a residence. I would also note it's only during peak periods, three or four times per year, that parking is a concern at the Marina. With respect to the aesthetic concerns, if you take a drive through Pirate's Cove, you'll see that we are a community that allow, that freely allows the storage of boats, RVs, trailers, and the like at our residences. If the Mariners to create additional parking and provide stockade fence or similar to hide the parking lot, it will clearly conform to the standard of the neighborhood. Therefore, the aesthetic concern is unfounded. Living in Cape Cod is synonymous with being on the water and boating is an integral part of the experience. The Marina is being flexible to meet the needs of the community. I would submit the change they have proposed, keeping with the current entrance in the Marina should enable all parties to agree with the plan. Sincerely, Ray T. Tral. P.S. I understand there's a public meeting planned for June sixth. I'm sending this letter in lieu of attendance as it conforms to my work schedule. Please include, this is probably the main record.
They have one here from Angela Pena. Does not have an, no, it does have an address. Okay, dated May twenty-third, one thirty P.M. Mary Ann, thank you for sending the attached documents. My property is at three fifteen Frog Pond Close. I completely agree with the tendencies on the traffic situation. However, they neglected to mention the trash left behind for residents to pick up, not to mention those that see fit to urinate along the side of the road. Unfortunately, they, if they approve this and allow for right turns out of the Marina, the town would be thumbing their, its nose at all those property owners, not only in Pirate's Cove, but those on Frog Pond Close. Jack Bond Road, named for the Jackson and Bonito family that my dad gave land to back in the fifties and sixties. Quaker Run Road, Simon's Narrow, all roads named by my father, some paved by my father when he owned almost the whole right side of Mashpee Neck Road to Pompaness at Bay and Shoestring Bay. My mom and dad cleared Mashpee Neck Road with their red tractor and fought hard to keep the peace and tranquility of the area to the point of donating several acres into the conservation of Mashpee. It makes me sick to my stomach that I think that the town would allow the property at three fifty-two Mashpee Neck Road to be commercialized. This is just what Ledham is doing, no matter how he and the attorneys word it. I know that I hoped, as I'm sure only a residence up and down the road, that would be adversely affected, that no other commercial parcel would be allowed and that the Marina was only grandfathered commercial property allowed on Mashpee Neck Road. My property is on top of three fifty-two Mashpee Neck Road, given to me by my mother, so I could build my little piece of tranquility and have my own patch to exhale on. And now there is this chance that I will gaze upon a parking lot. Again, Angela Pena. Okay, I think we have one from Matt and Gene guilty. Maybe related to John, do you have? Somebody have that? No, this is Matt and Jean. Okay. Uh, let's see, dated Tuesday, June 13th, from Matt and Jen, excuse me, not Jen. Dear Mr. Lira and department heads, and this was to Evan Lira and to Mary Ann Romero, regarding 352 Mashpee Neck Road, opposition to proposed plan. I'm writing in opposition to the plan to convert the residential property at 352 Mashpee Neck Road into a commercial slash industrial parking lot and boat storage area as proposed by the current owner, Timothy W. Leadham. We would like to officially state our opposition to the proposed intentions for the reasons stated below. 352 Mashpee Neck Road is a residential home and should remain that way. Allowing this request would set a very dangerous precedent. The adjacent wooded property would likely be the next special request to become a further expansion of the marina parking and boat storage, further compounding the problem and negative impacts on the residential neighborhood and the surrounding fragile environment. Mounted parking spots allowed should be commensurate with what is allowed for this size residential home at 352 Mashpee Neck Road. If this proposal were allowed to go forward and residential home was converted to thirty parking spot, lot, and boat storage, it would have significant adverse effect on the current residential neighborhood and its residents, including compounding the existing noise, pollution, and light pollution, increased runoff of gas and oil from the boats and trucks into the bay, increasing traffic and congestion on Mashpee Neck Road, increasing demand on the septic system, and decreasing surrounding property values. This proposal would benefit the owner of the marina and their paying friends while the residents of the community and the community itself would be left to live with the negative impacts twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. The paying customers of the marina, who were asked to write letters in support of the parking lot, clearly have invested interest in the convenience of the parking lot, but not our quiet, family-friendly residential neighborhood. We, like many of our neighbors, invest in this beautiful, quiet, and safe neighborhood as a place to raise our families and ultimately enjoy retirement. The expansion of the boat marina and now proposed boat marina parking lot and boat storage benefits the boat marina financially at the expense of the neighborhood it is doing business in. As stated previously, we're opposed to this proposal and request that the residential property remain a residential property with no parking lot and no additional light. Thank you for your consideration, considering our objection to the proposed intention. Jennifer and Matthew, I believe again, guilty, I'm not sure, 30 Captain's Row. That is it for letters? Okay. That's the, that's the one. Okay, Mary Ann, when are you gonna do this? Now, before or after? Got it. All right. Any final comments, anybody on the board? Questions, concerns? Over, over here. Where are you? Okay, this is an application to modify the existing special permit. Right here in writing, right out of the book, page 20, talks about special permits. So this is what the board has to consider when they vote tonight. And it's gonna take a second, but I'm gonna read it, because it's important. A special permit may be issued only following the procedures specified of the general laws and may be approved only if it is determined that the proposed use or development is consistent with applicable state and town regulations, statutes, bylaws, and plans. And the important part, will not adversely affect public health or safety, will not cause excessive demand on community facilities, will not significantly decrease surface or groundwater quality or air quality, will not have a significant adverse impact on wildlife habitat, S U R N systems, traffic flow, traffic safety, waterways, fisheries, public lands, and neighboring properties, will not cause excessive levels of noise, vibration, electrical disturbances, radioactivity or glare, will not destroy or disrupt any species listed as rare, endangered, or threatened by the Massachusetts Natural Heritage Program or any known historic or archaeological site, will not produce amounts of traf, trash, refuse, or debris in excess of the town's landfill and waste disposal capacities, will properly dispose of stumps, construction debris, hazardous materials, and other waste, will provide adequate off-street parking, will not cause excessive erosion or cause increased runoff into neighboring properties or into any natural river, stream, pond, or water body, and will not otherwise be detrimental to the town or the area. This is what we've got to consider tonight.
Wait, ask your question. That, what you just read in is for the issuance of a special permit.
Correct.
We are ruling on the modification of a special permit that was already granted under considering all of those regulations.
Stuff we still have to keep.
We still have to consider those in modifying the existing special permit. I agree.
So when you vote, consider this, all the stuff I just talked about. That's what's important. That's what the bylaw says. And we have to follow.
We get it.
Any final comments?
I do have one question.
Hold on one sec.
I have one. Under the conditions for the, for the modification, under number six, it indicates condition that vehicles are to exit and enter only from the driveway of 21 Frog Pond Close, remove the restriction sign, no right turn. Am I correct? Is that, is not what we intend to do?
I don't think we are allowed to tell anybody where they can drive.
No, no. Okay, but.
One of the conditions.
But in effect, what that's doing is if that sign is removed, people would go in Frog Pond Close rather than out to Mashpee Neck Road.
Can we condition it that it stays?
So just.
Could we not condition, the sign says you have to take a left?
The sign is up to the owner. Leave the owner, put sign.
You don't have a problem with that?
What should the condition read on?
That the sign remains.
So remove, to just remove the, from the condition, remove the exist, restriction sign, no right turn, just take that out, strike.
Yep.
Right. And the, and the balance remains, am I correct?
That's correct.
I have a question.
All right, read, read that again, would you? What's it gonna say?
Condition that vehicles are to exit and enter only from the driveway of 21 Frog Pond Close.
Which they already had agreed to.
Period.
Right.
And the sign is there at the option of the owner, and he's indicated he's gonna keep it there.
Shouldn't it say that you have to remain taking a left as you exit the parking lot? Because you can't just say it goes on the Frog Pond Close, because you can go either way.
Right.
It should maintain a left turn. I don't know if we can condition that or not, but if it's saying to remove the sign, I think that's a problem.
Yeah, we don't want the signs to.
Keep the sign.
Yeah, so I'm gonna just, if the sign exists, which I believe it does, we're not asking to remove it, so it'll remain.
Okay, but I thought you said something that you.
Yeah, it's, it's not a one-way, am I correct?
Condition that vehicles are to exit and enter only from the driveway of 21 Frog Pond Close. Period.
Yeah, I don't know how we could possibly tell somebody they had to go one way or the other.
So the sign was something that Mr. Leadham did on his own? It wasn't required?
I have no idea.
That's, that's my question. If it wasn't required, then he's being a good neighbor.
Well, okay.
Doing that.
Maybe it's a suggestion, but.
I don't think we can police that.
You can't enforce it.
Okay.
No, it's a suggestion, right? We're not, we're not doing anything. The sign is up.
But I agree, we don't, have we struck it that it doesn't, we don't remove the sign? If there's a sign there.
Who is the, Chris, who is the owner of record? Is it Shoestring Bay Nominee Trust Two?
It is now, both properties are now owned by 21 Frog Pond Close LLC.
Okay, so I guess it doesn't matter, the O and M refers to, because it doesn't matter, as long as it goes on record and is indexed correctly, right? So who's the owner of, so, so who's the special permit under right now?
It was one of the prior, it was under a trust. The original special permit was under the trust of Shoestring Bay Nominee Trust One, I believe. But now both properties are owned by Frog, 21 Frog Pond Close LLC.
So the special permit falls with the land, not the owner, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So then, who is the modification going to? Who are you gonna put this on record?
21 Frog Pond Close LLC.
So not Shoestring Bay Nominee Trust?
No.
Well, the motion was gonna be made in reference to Shoestring Bay Nominee Trust.
Gotta change it.
Yes. I would say so.
21 Frog Pond Close.
So if I were asked a motion, say the owner again, please?
21 Frog Pond Close LLC.
Wow.
Got you.
Oh my God. 21 Frog Pond Close LLC, so he's not a trustee, he's a manager. This is great. Oh my God. Is he the only manager?
Can I make a suggestion? That we, if you make a motion, that you're gonna make a motion to approve modification to an existing special permit, which was previously issued to.
Yeah, well, so I was gonna refer to special permits.
And then, but this is for 21 Frog.
I think we'll be, I think.
Yikes.
I trust you.
Okay, any final comments before Ron makes a motion? Ron, would you make a motion, please?
No, I'd love to make a motion. And I would, I would entice any member of this board to chime in if in fact I make a mistake, please. I would like to make a motion that we issue to Timothy W. Leadham, manager of 21 Frog Pond Close LLC, at 21 Frog Pond Close and 3352 Mashpee Neck Road, a modification of an existing special permit for the use of a perm, of a marina and to expand to include an adjacent prop, adjacent property located at 352 Mashpee Neck Road. The original special permits were issued under the following, I guess, the entities, and they are as follows, SP-83-3-008, and SP-00-167, and SP-02-59, and SP-2020-06. They were issued under Section 17424 C9B, and 17425E, and 17417 of the zoning bylaws. This is a property located in our three zoning district, map 90, parcel 83, and map 90, parcel 97, Mashpee, Mass. It was continued from May 24th, 2023, hearings at the request of the attorney. Is that, am I, okay so far?
I heard you're right, Ron.
Great. Number one, the conditions of this motion are as follows, number one, condition on the recommendations submitted by the town planner in a memo dated June 5th, 2023, to the ZBA secretary as part of this decision. Two, condition upon the engineering review report provided by Pechi Engineering dated June 13th, 2023, and June 26th, 2023, as part of this decision. Three, prior to the request of the, of a building agreement, the applicant shall issue a working capital account in the amount of $5,000. The check will be issued to the town of Mashpee to be utilized to pay for the initial peer review and for future peer review inspections and sign-offs if required. Number four, this is condition, all town department comments are under the record and all public comments are under the record. Also, condition on the recommendations submitted by the plan review committee dated Tuesday, June 6th, 2023, as follows. The office is in allowed use as an accessory to Mashpee Neck Marina. I'm gonna, I'm gonna enumerate them and I will number them even though they're not numbered here. So number two, condition that the gate access and stockade fence be widened to accommodate for the fire department recommendations. Number three, conservation department recommendation would be up to the conservation commission, they are scheduled, I'll leave that off. Number four, Board of Health recommending septic system upgrade to an IA system to accommodate the office space of three-bedroom house. The residential dwelling is only for office use, employee use, and the three-bedroom house. The residential house to be restricted to the dwelling with no future conversions of a restaurant, portable restroom to be used by boaters of the marina. Number five, DPW Director requires a curb cut permit for emergency access purposes. Number six, no boat rack storage allowed. Number seven, no special events allowed on the property, i.e. weddings, private functions. Number five, in reference to the total comments, no boat storage between June 1st through and inclusive of September 1st. Number six, condition that vehicles are to exit and enter only from the driveway of 21 Frog Pond Close. Number seven, condition that the lighting on the property be night sky lighting and to satisfy peer review comment by Mr. Pechi, June 26th, 23. Number eight, condition that there be no construction on the property during the hours of 5:00 PM and 8:00 AM, no construction work on Sundays. Number nine, condition that moving of boats and or heavy vehicles be restricted to the hours between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM on 352 Mashpee Neck Road. Number 10, condition that there is no boat, vehicle, or trailer, trailer mechanical repair service done on 352 Mashpee Neck Road. Number 11, condition that the screening between the two lots be Eastern Red Cedar rather than Arbor Viding. Number 12, parking is restricted to customer parking and office use only. Number 13, the zoning Board of Appeals finds the residential use of the property is incidental to the marina only. Number 14, the short-term rental, no short-term rental of the property. Number 15, site plan prepared for Shoestring Bay Nominee Trust Two, Timothy W. Leadham, trustee, project 352 Mashpee Neck Road and 21 Frog Pond Close Mashpee, Mass. Ron, title. Drawn title, site aerial exhibit plan date, May twenty third, twenty twenty three. Page one of three revised day, revision date, five two twenty three, add Arbor Viding screening, red Eastern Cedar. Six two twenty three revised access location, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering. Drawing title, site improvement plan, page three of three, revision dates, five two twenty three, add Arbor Viding screening. Six two twenty three revised access location. Six nine twenty three revised drainage and fence gate size. Six fourteen twenty three revise, revisions per peer review. Six twenty seven twenty three issued for permit. Number thirteen, condition that any modifications to the plan will require the applicant to return to this board. Also, I want to make specific reference to the comments that was made by the applicant that any conditions that would add an additional sheet to these sheets would, could require additional oversight by this board and may need and will require this board to review those, any and all those changes. Number seventeen, access to the additional overflow parking shall be from Twenty One Frog Pond Close only, except emergency access through gate, and the access to the residence shall remain from Three Five Two Mashpee Neck Road. Eighteen, the residence may only be used by the owner of the marina and family or an employee of the marina and family. Eighteen B, condition that the deed be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds as a deed restriction limiting the use of this home as an accessory used to the marina for owner or an employee. Nineteen, a portion of the residence may be renovated for office use that is only to be used as accessory and incidental to the marina. Twenty, the residence cannot be used as an accessory, clubhouse, restaurant, snack bar, or wet bar, nor shall be preexisting or newly constructed accessory structure on the subject property be utilized for the aforementioned uses. Twenty one, the number of boats restored on Three Five Two Mashpee Neck Road cannot exceed the number of parking spaces approved by the zoning board of appeals. Thirty two. Twenty two, the special permit is conditioned upon approval by the conservation commission. Twenty three, applicant to install an AI septic system and tank, which shall be rated H twenty. Twenty four, no boat storage allowed on Three Five Two Mashpee Neck Road from June first to September first. Twenty five, boats shall be trail it, move, reposition, et cetera, on Three Five Two Mashpee Neck Road during the hours of eight AM to five thirty PM. Shall only be trail it, move. Number twenty six, only boats owned by existing slip customers may be stored on Three Five Two Mashpee Neck Road. Twenty seven, the mechanical work to boats on three, no mechanical work to boats on Three Five Two Mashpee Neck Road. Twenty eight, if the owner or future owner of Three Five Two Mashpee Neck Road seeks to return the property to a residential only said, residence only, said owner may request the zoning board release the conditions as to the limitations placed on the use of the residence, and such conditions shall be released on the stipulation that the lot be placed in separate ownership from Twenty Five, Twenty One Frog Pond Close, and the parking area be removed and returned to its preexisting lot condition, and any deed restriction requirement shall mirror this. Twenty nine, the O and M operation, but the operation and maintenance plan as submitted to this board shall be modified. Said modification will be as such, and shall be submitted to this board prior to the application for a building permit and, and included into its record. The first page, actually page two at the top shall read as follows. A property operating, a properly operating drainage system is the basis for long life of the roads and parking area and for the protection of wetland resources against pollutants carried by storm water. If the drainage system fails to work, frequent pooling of storm water would be expected to occur on site, possibly affecting the use and effect and activities of the property. An engineer qualify or a qualified individual shall be responsible for the maintenance and operation of the drainage system. Number thirty, the recording of the amended O and M and special, modified special permit shall be required, and proof thereof shall be submitted to this board prior to the issuance or the request of a building permit. Number thirty one, there should be no more slips created than exist today, and that number is one hundred and fifty four. Number thirty two, help. The, the lot that is, the new lot being created is for overflow parking only, and shall only be filled upon the.
Lower lot.
Only be, only be used.
Only be utilized when the lower lot.
Is completely full.
Is completely full, and said full would be seventy seven cars. Could've been said a million different ways, but.
That's fine.
That's my motion.
That is the longest motion.
I know.
Ever been.
I need a glass of water.
I'll, I'll second it.
No seconds. Bill, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
I vote yes. The project, a lot of conditions. I've never seen so many.
Only thirty four.
It's the longest motion I've read, and I've been reading motions for, I think, ten years, haven't I?
Yep. But hopefully we covered everything that we should have covered.
And I hope we protected the neighborhood, tried to make everybody happy.
Yeah.
A lot of people, a lot of people, a lot of boards and committees in this town, town hall, read through this thing with a fine tooth comb.
A bunch of effort. Huge effort. Every single of the car.
Thank you.
Doesn't mention if that's a date.
Go for it. Take a short break.
Yeah.
There you go.
John, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Come around here.
It was, oh, trade in.
I used to make, took a lot of observations.
Thirty three condition.
And they were long.
I know. I was gonna be sure you checked the right box.
Yeah, okay, there you go.
That was a long one.
All right, let's see if we can continue everything.
Okay, Brad, you're gonna sit on this one. Charlie, would you read the next new hearing, first new hearing, I should say?
Under new hearings, the first new hearing is for Mute Swan Circle. Owners Patricia Donnelly and Roger Schiffman request a variance under Section One Seventy Four dash thirty three of the zoning bylaws setback from wetlands to allow for construction of an access stairway to the dock on property located in an R three zoning district, map eighty four parcel thirty eight dash zero Mashpee Mass.
Hi.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Ahmed Clower Law Firm here, in Falmouth. I'm used to saying here in Falmouth, but not, not, not here in Falmouth, not here in Mashpee. I am here tonight representing Roger Schiffman and Patricia Donnelly, the owners of Four Mute Swan Circle. I'm hoping this is slightly less controversial than the last hearing, and hopefully a little bit faster. I'm joined also by Mark Dibb from Cape and Islands Engineering. He's here if there's any questions that need his clarification. The applicants are requesting a variance from Provision One Seventy Four Thirty Three in order to allow a structure closer than fifty feet to the water. Specifically, they're seeking an access stairway to the dock, which is approximately sixteen feet from mean high water. This property, Four Mute Swan Circle, is just shy of an acre. It's forty one thousand four hundred and ninety square feet. It's on the western side of Shoestring Bay. The owners obtained approvals and permits to construct the home and to develop the property back in two thousand twenty for a variety of reasons. They're in, finishing that process now. So the dock and the stairs are fully permitted with both the state and conservation commission. Chapter ninety one license is issued, an order of conditions was issued and recorded. However, a variance is needed in order to allow the stairway, which would be within that fifty foot setback. Having the stairway there improves the property, actually serves to protect the resource areas more than not having it does. Having the stairs is better than having someone tramp over the coastal bank. The allowance of this variance would not be a detriment to the site of the neighborhood, and would not be in derogation of the intent of the bylaw. That's effectively it. I'd be happy to address any questions that the board has.
Okay, I'm gonna make one move right here. Bill has stepped down, so it's going to be, sitting on this will be Bob and Brad and us three. Just for the record, okay. Any questions you guys?
I don't have a site point.
I have an extra conversation.
Yeah.
I have a small, are you, okay, that's good.
Sorry, straightforward.
Do you have any issues on this?
I don't. Does he have to be a mountain goat to get to his dock, or he's gonna have to get a variance? That's all I can say.
Yeah, what's the, it goes from what to what?
It's like sixteen feet of vertical rise, I think you mentioned.
It's a steep one.
And again, it's one of them, the docks are allowed, they're already proved, this is, I'm, I'm.
Microphone please.
I'm very familiar with this project. Again, it's, it's one of them where it's, topography dictates the variance. And because it would be, if it was flat ground, it would, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have any of the stairs. Very, very approval by the board.
Yeah, it's also, it's an odd shaped lot. It's got a circle in it, so to speak, cut out, long and thin, and sloped dramatically. So I've got no issue with it.
I just wanna, it does require a building, a building permit.
Brad, any thoughts on this? Any, any thoughts on this one?
No.
Bob? Ron, would you like to make a motion on this?
We want to close publicly, any public comments?
Uh, yeah, good, thank you. Any public comments on this?
Lynn Barbie Surf Drive, I just have a question of what would be the mitigation after this stairway was built, because there will certainly be disruption in the wetland area in the building of it, and what would be their conditions for mitigating any of that, and in fact, hopefully improving it?
Very good question, and we should have read these comments in from the boards. Do we have them?
I have it, conservation.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Conservation commission approved access stairs to be built among other projects on the property lot.
So the mitigation would have been outlined by conservation when they went to conservation, so you'd have to check with conservation as to what their mitigation was on the site.
There would have been what order of conditions?
Order of conditions, so the applicant, you made, do you have the mitigation plan?
So this was permitted in twenty twenty as part of the overall development of the project, so all the, there's no mitigation specific to the stairway.
But maybe you could show the mitigation on the lot or something.
Maybe just point it out.
She just has a question, and I'm trying to help her with it.
No, completely understood. I think, you know, I don't think that we've outlined the landscaping on this plan specifically.
So have you been to conservation with this specific?
This, this, this is the plan that was approved by conservation.
In, in back, way back when?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
And so these, and your order of conditions have been extended?
If it, Mark, do you know if it's been?
We only use, you get two, so when was this approved?
So the, they might have approved it as an RDA for the extension of the.
But even RDA has, has time.
Sure, no, but the order of conditions was, was actually approved and recorded in twenty twenty to the extent that this required any additional permitting through CONCOM. To the extent that this required any additional permitting through CONCOM, they'd have to go through that process.
No, but so you'd have, so usually your order of conditions only lasts for three years, so you could have been opted, you'd have to.
Right, I have Conservation comments right here.
Yeah.
Why don't we just read them?
I just read it. That's what I just read.
Yeah.
That's all they said?
It just says it was approved and everything else.
Okay, well, you know what, it's none of my business. So bottom line, so I'm just trying to answer this question.
Right, they haven't finished the initial construction still.
And Board of Health comment was, no comment.
Okay.
Understood.
I mean, should go Conservation.
It's not, it's out of our jurisdiction.
Thank you for bringing that up. Anybody? Okay.
Close them.
Yeah, let's close the public comment.
I'd like to make a motion that we close public comment in reference to Patricia Donnelly and Robert Schiffman in reference to their variance under 174-33 at Four Mute Swan Circle.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Bob seconds, Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
And Scott?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, the public comment is closed on this. Okay, why don't we make a motion on this?
Yep. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a special, no, a variance under section 174-33 to Patricia Donnelly and Roger Schiffman of Four Mute Swan Circle. Said variance is under section 174-33 of the zoning bylaw, specifically the setback from wetlands to allow for construction of an access stairway to the dock on property located in R3 zoning district, map 84 parcel 38-0 Mashpee Mass with the following conditions. One, Board of Attorney and the applicant meets all the conditions of a variance under Mass General Law 48, section 10. Two, site plan and peer-designed plan prepared for Patricia Donnelly and Roger Schiffman, project Four Mute Swan Circle Mashpee Mass, sheet number one of one, date October 10, 2019, prepared by Cape Town Island Engineering, drawn by JVBRLR, checked by MC, stamped and signed by Matthews C. Coster, professional land surveyor, number 52282, and Paul Azardi Rivera, professional civil engineer, number 46845. Three condition, an all-town department commissar entered in the record. Four condition, on any changes to the plan will require the applicant to return to this board. Number five, condition that the applicant is aware that he needs to obtain a building permit prior to construction.
Can you wave a second?
Second.
Okay, Bob seconds, Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Brad?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
I vote yes. Good luck.
Thank you all very much for your time, it's greatly appreciated.
Yep.
Thanks for your patience.
This draft?
No, that's, you wanna, that's what's done, you gotta stamp those.
Yep. Couple more plans. What? Sorry, right?
Yep, I don't want anybody to think. Get something wrong.
Good, good one. Coming up. That's, we're good? Okay, Charlie, would you read the next new hearing?
Twenty-five Pembroke Drive is rescheduled for July 12, 2023. The next on our list is Seventeen Bowsprit Point. Owners J.C. and Christie M. Willitsen request a written finding under section 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a deck addition, alterations, extensions to a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling on property located in the R3 zoning district, map 105 parcel 228 Mashpee Mass.
Bob, you're gonna sit on this.
Yep.
And Scott out? Yeah, Scott's out. All right, so how about, and Bob and Charlie? So three plus two, okay? Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Jay and Christie Willitsen. They are the owners of Seventeen Bowsprit Point. They are seeking a written finding under 174-17 to make alterations to a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family residence. This is a lot that is located in the R3 zoning district, and it has several existing non-conformities. The front yard setback is non-conforming as it is only 21.4 feet from the property line where it is, the requirement is 40 feet. The rear yard setback, I should note, this is in the Little Neck Bay, oh no, I'm sorry, the next one is. This is, I got confused. The rear yard setback is 15 feet. We have 20 feet on this one, so that's a conforming condition. And the side yard setback is 14.4, the southerly side, so that's a non-conforming condition. So again, front yard setback's non-conforming, the southerly yard setback is non-conforming. The, all but 300 feet of this, 300 square feet of this lot is in land subject to coastal storm flowage, so we have 100% lot coverage. So it's a 9,200-square-foot lot, but only 300 feet is outside of the land subject to coastal storm flowage. So 100% lot coverage and setback to wetlands is zero, since the, you know, 99% of the lot is within land subject to coastal storm flowage. I did my best because really what this project is about is a lot of small modifications to the house, so I don't know if you have my, my presentation, which I tried to do a job of noting what exactly is going on on this proposal. So.
Nice mark.
Yeah, I thought it'd be easier to do it this, so the first part of this proposal is, which is circled as A.
Circle is A.
Just one second.
Hang on a second, I'll capture that.
Who do they assign this to?
You, Joe. You have the show?
Yeah.
No, this presentation.
Yeah, I have it.
Okay. With all the?
No, you don't.
Yeah, all the pictures and everything?
I do.
Okay. I'm sorry.
No, so there are, there are really five things that we're doing to this property. So A is we're gonna enclose that entryway and make it a little bit wider. B, if you notice, there's a little window that kind of sticks out, so we're just boxing out that front of the house there where it's circled B.
Yep.
We are going to add a first-floor deck where it's C. We are going to move the stairs on the westerly side, which is circled D, and move them to the easterly side. And then E, we're just simply extending the second floor living space over the proposed first-floor deck. So those are the five things that we are doing. By doing this, we are not creating any new non-conformities, and we are not intensifying any of the non-conformities except for the lot coverage, okay? So we're not, the front yard setback's not changing, the rear yard setback's not changing, the side yard setbacks are not changing, other than the northerly side is gonna go to 17.7 feet, but it's still a conforming condition, okay? So we are increasing the lot coverage under, if this lot was not, no land subject to coastal storm flowage, the lot coverage would be currently 17.8%, and it'd be increased to 19.98%. It'd be under the 20, 25% that you allow for 10,000-square-feet and less lots.
And this lot is a big?
9,200 square feet, but only 300 square feet under the minimum lot size of the bylaw.
Got it.
So in theory, in reality, you're going from 100 to 100, but?
Right.
Under the old?
Yeah. We're under, we're under what would be?
You're under the 25.
Right, what would be normally allowed by this board. So again, we're not creating any new non-conformities, we're not intensifying any existing non-conformities other than the, other than the lot coverage. And I'd also note, if you look at this lot, it's pretty unique. It's, you know, Bowsprit Point comes down as a loop, so it is a funk, you know, it's a funky shaped lot. It's obviously affected by, by the wetland areas, but, you know, these really are modest modifications to this home and certainly consistent with some of the other houses that you see in that area.
So it looks like your distance to the wetland is the same?
That is correct.
20-plus a minus?
Right.
Is that what I'm seeing?
That is correct, so I think it's comprehensive, we're gonna say wetland. So that's not changing, but? But because we're in land subject coastal storm flowage, we're technically zero.
Right, I got it.
Zero to zero.
Right.
Chris, circle E, you're saying you're extending that?
Yeah, the upstairs is gonna be, not any further than where the first-floor deck is.
So you're extending out?
Yeah, we're extending out.
So you are increasing some non-conformity, did you say that?
Only the lot coverage.
Only this?
First.
But it's, okay.
Yeah.
So there's no non-conformity expansion?
There's no not, there's no non-conformity that's being extended or intensified, correct?
And there's no new non-conformity?
That is correct.
When you say you're extending the non-conformity for lot coverage, it's only because you're 100 now and you're 100.
Well, correct, that is correct.
Well, you're also going from the old theory of 17 to 19 something.
Right, but that?
But still under.
Right.
Either one of them is in excess.
Right, correct.
Cause it's 25%.
I'm just saying he's going a little, but he's still under.
Right. What would be normally approved by the board.
Correct.
So those are the, those are the modifications, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Good presentation. Easy?
I'm good. Yeah, I thought, trying to explain all these little things, I think the circles helped a lot.
I see something in the plan I've never seen in a plan in my life. The area seaward of the lawn is infested with fragmites, what's that?
Fragmites? That's like the, those big cattails that you see in the, in the salt marsh.
I wonder why that made statement?
I don't know, Tom Bunker did the plan, he's not here, I would have to ask him why he noted that. And I believe that this, this project has already been approved by Conservation.
Well, we're gonna get to that.
We'll get to it.
And we have Board of Health and Conservation.
Yep.
So before we do that, do we have any public comments on this? Anybody? Okay, seeing none, Ron, do you make a motion on that?
I'd like to make a motion that we close the public comment section of this.
Hearing.
Hearing for Seventeen Bowsprit Point, owners J.C. and Christie M. Willitsen. This is under section 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaw. Second.
Bob seconds, Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, let's read in some comments here.
I've got Conservation right here, John.
Yeah.
Twenty-five Tide Run, Commission approved additions to dwelling.
No, we're not, no, Bowsprit.
Oh, got one, one, I'm sorry.
Right above it.
I do the same thing.
Gotcha. Seventeen Bowsprit Point, Commission approved addition to front of dwelling and rebuild of rear deck as well invasive control and mitigation in resource area. And? Board of Health? Board of Health, Seventeen Bowsprit, Board of Health, three-bedroom house, no comment.
So you're not expanding the bedrooms?
No.
Okay, not that this really matters, but it's cause I'm inquisitive. What's the invasive control, what are they doing?
I'm not sure, I don't know.
Mark, do you know? Grab the mic.
I just wanna preference, this is not my project, this is Tom Bunker's project.
Oh, sorry.
I can just, it's probably referring to the fragmites, they're an invasive species, and they're gonna be managed as part of it, or there could be other invasive.
Dig them up?
There's a whole process.
I've done the process, it's a pain in the butt.
Don't you like cut off the tops?
Not fragmites, but something else.
Yeah, you cut it off and?
Cut off the top.
But then you're gonna go two growing seasons, it's a tough, yeah.
But Conservation would have commented the day of the problem.
Yeah. I didn't, I've never heard of the fragmites, that's all.
Okay. So comments are done. Any final questions? All right, Ron, would you make a motion, please?
Yes.
Oh, I thought we did.
He did.
I apologize, no, we closed, yeah, you're right, my mistake, I apologize, sorry.
Eight-thirty, I'm?
I know, I'm there. Did you ask me to make a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we issue a written finding to Christie M. Willitsen and J.C., owners of Seventeen Bowsprit Point, under sections 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaw to allow for a deck, to allow for deck additions, alterations, extensions to a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling, property located in R3 zoning district, map 105 parcel 228, Mashpee Mass with the following conditions. One, the Board of Attorney and the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass General Laws 48, section 6. Two, plot, plot plan, proposed renovation, renovation Seventeen Bowsprit Point Mashpee Mass, prepared for Jay and Christie Willitsen, scale one inch is 20 feet, date May 4, 2023, drawn by TJB, job number 21006, revisions, change lot coverage 51223, TB drawing number B28-44, stamped and signed by Thomas Jackson Bunker, registered land surveyor, number 32653. Three, house plans, Willitsen residence Seventeen Bowsprit Point Mashpee Mass, prepared by Architect Associates, job number 2124, date May 12, 2023, scale is noted, drawn by ELC, issued for review, sheet number, sheet A2, first-floor plan, A3, second-floor plan, A4 elevations, number four, condition, an all-town department commissar entered in the record, number five, the Board finds that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing, non-conforming structure or use to the neighborhood. Six, condition that any changes to the plan will require the applicant to return to this board.
Wave a second.
Second.
Bob seconds, Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
And Ron?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you very much.
Nice project, thank you.
Plans?
Brad, you're gonna sit on the next one.
Is.
Let's grab Scott, oh, there he is.
Twenty-five.
Scott, we just have some stuff so low. This one. Coming up.
There you go.
John, we'll get that back to you as soon as Bobby comes back. All right, no reason to wait, Brad, you're on this one. Charlie, would you read the next new hearing?
Next new hearings, Twenty-five Tide Run, owners Patrick J. and Nissa R. Knight, request a written finding under 174-17, and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a garage addition, alterations, extensions to a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling on property located in the R3 zoning district and Little Neck Bay zoning district, map 126 parcel 40 Mashpee Mass.
Hi. Good evening again, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Patrick and Nissa Knight. They are the owners of Twenty-five Tide Run, they are here tonight, as well as Mark Dibb from Cape Town Islands, the engineer, and Greg Schuruzon of ResCom, who is the architect on this project. As, as noted in the public hearing notice, we are applying under 174-17 for a alteration, extension to an existing, pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family residence, so we're seeking a written finding. The property is located at Twenty-five Tide Run, it is in the R3 zoning district. However, it is subject to the Little Neck Bay subdivision special permit. So the setbacks are? So the, the, um, setbacks are a little bit different in the, in Little Neck Bay, so.
Lot coverage is thirty.
Lot coverage is thirty percent. The front yard setback's thirty pers, thirty feet. The rear yard setback's twenty feet as opposed to fifteen, fifteen. So there are a little slight differences. Um, that being said, the existing structure is completely conforming except as to setback to wetland and lot coverage. And that is because about a little over the, this is one, this is a unique lot. It's not totally within land subject to coastal storm flowage. Only about a little over a third of it is in land subject to coastal storm flowage. So if you look at the total lot area of this lot, it's fifteen thousand sixty square feet, which would meet the minimum lot size for the Little Neck Bay cluster. However, given the interpret, the minimum lot size of land subject coastal storm flowage, the lot size is only six thousand three hundred and twenty-five square feet. So the existing lot coverage is thirty-five percent, given the fact that some of this lot is within, not all of it, but some of it is within land subject to coastal storm flowage.
So you don't have a pre-existing, non-conformity in lot coverage?
No, I do, because thirty-five percent. That's over the thirty of Little Neck Bay.
Okay.
So I do have a thirty.
So that's pre-existing?
Yeah, so thirty percent is Little Neck Bay, I'm at thirty-five percent, given the land subject to coastal storm flowage.
What would it be without?
Fourteen point six percent. And the increase would be to sixteen point six percent. So we'd be well on, so we're going from thirty-five to forty percent, given the land subject to coastal storm flowage, but if you didn't count that, it'd only be going from fourteen point six to six point six percent. Otherwise, all the nonconform, there are no setback, no front yard, no side yard, no rear yard, non-conformities. The new structure, the new building on top of the existing foundation, will not create any new non-conformities, and we're not obviously intensifying any of the existing setbacks because they're all conforming. So what's happening with this project is the structure itself over the foundation is being taken down. It's a pretty dilapidated building, but the existing foundation is remaining. So that's why we're treating it as a alteration to a pre-existing, non-conforming structure, because the, the foundation is remaining. There will be some expansion of that footprint, given that there will be a new two-car garage. Uh, there will be a, the entryway will be closed off and pushed forward a little bit, and there's a, a, um, a covered por, porch to the, uh, to the right side of the project. Right now, there's a significant portion of deck which is in land subject to coastal storm flowage. All of that structure, the house, the decking, that's all being taken out of the land subject. So there will be no structure as far as deck or house within the flood zone. Where currently there's deck now, there will be a patio, there will be a spa splash pool type thing. That will be in there, but as, as far as structure is concerned, everything's being pulled out of the land subject to coastal storm flow, so nothing in the flood zone. So the other thing to note, we did get the, um, uh, Board of Health comments recommending an IA system that's based on the new regulations that have come down. My client is agreeable to a condition from this board that an IA system be put in as approved by the Board of Health. So.
I think that should be.
Yeah, that's fine. My, my client is agreeable to that.
So is this approved going in?
It's like, I don't know how you actually term it, Greg might be, it's, it's like a plunge pool, it's small.
And is it in the land subject?
That is in land subject, yes, but it's ground level, so it wouldn't be, I don't think they, you'd consider that a structure.
What did Conservation say?
It's been approved by Conservation.
So they're fully aware of the plunge pool?
Yes, that's right. Everything's, yeah, everything's been approved by Conservation.
Does it get drained in the winter? Where does it get drained to?
No, I don't think it gets drained. But I don't know.
You had this over in Pompaness, similar situation, talking years ago. Where there was a pool and there was question about how you're going to drain it. Where's it going? Are they going to put it in the creek? That type of thing.
Right.
It went on and on and on. So I'm surprised that Conservation didn't talk about this.
Well, they may have, I mean, I wasn't at the Conservation hearing, so there may be conditions in that permit that deal with draining of the pool, but I don't, I don't have the order and I wasn't, I wasn't at the meeting.
I think we just condition on whatever they did order.
Right.
Well, it's condition, all-town department commissary. Well, we've got it. We've got an order, we do, I don't hurry. Thing from them.
Dave, do you know anything on this?
Yeah, so it's true. Well, um, generally, like, like, um, this board usually just does dispersion on, on a pool. If it disperses, I mean, we've already, we know that there's not. So, uh, generally, we don't have too many issues with, um, the pool being in a, in a flood zone.
You understand that, I was just thinking about the drainage. Sure this chemical's in the plunge pool?
Yeah, I mean, this, 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 um, proposal did come to me, uh, as a, as a, for, for a permit application, which I had to deny because of, of setback to wetland. That's pretty much it. That's the only reason why it's even sent to the board.
It's a, it's a salt pool, so no chemicals.
I mean, I didn't have any, many, any other issues, but the, the way we look at the.
I mean, I personally have a salt pool, I don't drain it. I mean, we drain it down to a lower level.
Yeah, there's no need to.
Do you remember what I'm talking about over in Pompaness?
You don't want to run it down the road.
Yeah, well, the question is, was it going to run into the creek over there in Pompaness? Was it Dean's Pond or the extension of Dean's Pond?
Yeah, Elizabeth Island Road or up there.
Yeah.
No, I understand, I mean, it was, this, this whole project has been approved by Concom.
But that's typical when there, any, when anyone has a pool, they're going to have to, and when to drain it down to that level. So I would condition it on, um.
Well, hopefully, hopefully, I'm sure Conservation.
My, my opinion is.
Was involved in this.
It's a Conservation issue and they have no problem with approving it.
Um, their comments by Conservation says, "Commission approved additions to dwelling as well as, as well hardscape, landscape, mitigation, and modifications to peer on the property."
Right, and they didn't mention it?
No mention of the pool.
Really not our.
Okay.
We do have one small thing on the plan this morning.
Yep.
Um, is the sunroom a heated space? Or is that, says sunroom on the second floor. Is that heated space?
That's enclosed.
That's enclosed, heated space. I don't know if Board of Health could have an issue with that without the, I don't know if you've talked to them about it, they might have an issue with the doors. Yeah, it's, that looks like a fifth bedroom. It's a four-bedroom system?
Yeah, Board of Health, uh, indicated septic was approved and installed for four-bedroom before Newtown IA regulations and state Title V. Recommend looking into upgrading septic tank to IA technology while construction is going on before state enforces mandatory upgrades. So it's approved as for a four-bedroom modification.
Yeah, so it's a Board of Health issue, it'll probably come up when you submit, go for a, I just usually bring those up.
Well, when they, when they do the inspection.
Right. Well, it's not the inspection, it's when they do the permit. Board of Health's going to look at that, I think they're going to have, I would assume they're going to have an issue with that.
Well, wait a minute, didn't they comment?
They didn't comment, and I don't know if they picked up on, I don't know.
No, I mean, they commented, so.
They commented it's a four-bedroom system, but I'm counting five.
We do, they get provided the plans.
Only a volunteer.
It will be sent to them for plan review.
I mean, Mike, do you agree that that's usually their typical Board of Health? Usually looks for six or.
They may just.
I know they let them make it smaller, so they might say remove the doors.
Yeah, they, they may.
I'm just bringing it out just so you'll know. It could come back.
No more permits, man.
Wow, can't believe this went there.
I, I don't have any other comments as far as the board's town board. Read the two in.
It's only been, what, two years you've been here?
Any questions in concern to you?
Senior moment.
What did he get there, kid?
Brad's on it. Any questions that concerns Brad? Scott?
No, that was my, I just wanted to bring it up as a, just something.
I'm fine with it.
It's not really, it's not really a issue.
Good. Okay, we've read the comments in. Anybody in the audience have a comment on this? Okay, Ron, would you make a motion on the public comments?
Yeah, I'd like to close public comments in reference to the written finding under Section 174-17, 174-33 for Nissa, Nissa R. Knight and Patrick J. Knight of Twenty-Five Tide Run.
Wait a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, Brad seconds. And Brad, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes, okay, the public comment is closed. All right, Ron, would you make a motion on this hearing?
Yeah.
One second, just making note.
Take your time.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we issue a written finding to Nissa R. Knight and Patrick J. Knight of Twenty-Five Tide Run. Said written finding is under Section 174-17, 174-33 of the zoning bylaw to allow for garage addition, alteration, extension to a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling and property located in R3 zoning district and Little Neck Bay zoning district, map 126 parcel 40. Mashpee mass with the following conditions. One, board has determined the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Master General Law 48, Section 6. Two, site plan prepared for Patrick J. and Nissa R. Knight, project Twenty-Five Tide Run, Mashpee mass, sheet number one of one. Date, January 5, 2022, drawn by J.V.B.R.L.R., checked by M.C., prepared by Cape Town Islands Engineering, drawing title. Proposed site improvements and dock maintenance plan stamped and signed by Matthew C. Coster, professional land surveyor, number 52282, and Paul Lizard Rivera, number 46845. Three house plans prepared for Knight residence, Twenty-Five Tide Run Mashpee mass, architect Rizcom, architectural inc., date 011623, revision date 4/4/23. General A0, foundation plan A1, new first floor plan A2, new second floor plan A3, roof plan A4 elevations, A5 elevations. Four, condition, all-town department commissary under the record. Number five, the board finds that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing, non-conforming structure or use to the neighborhood. Six, condition that any changes to plan require the applicant to return to this board. Seven, condition, this, the board is requiring and prior to the submittal of a Board of Health plan, uh, of a building permit on this lot, a, an AIA system approved by the Mashpee Board of Health will be required on this lot.
Wait a second? Brad, you second?
Yes.
All right, Brad, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Great, thank you very much.
Nice project.
Thank you.
Be a nice, nice upgrade to that neighborhood. I took a look at the house. It's in the disrepair.
That's a big upgrade to that piece of property.
Did you get a look?
Yeah.
Yeah, that house is pretty, pretty tough shape.
Dilapidated.
See it?
Bob, you're going to sit on the next one.
Okay.
It's, uh, under other business. Oh, make sure we don't turn it again. Okay, we still working? Oh, wait a minute, I got a sign. It's not, it's all right.
Come on back here.
Thank you.
Yeah.
He was just waiting. He's just waiting. He can't wait to get to that pool.
When do you leave tomorrow? No, it's Friday.
Where are you going?
He said he had to be out there by nine o'clock.
He's already there, he just, you can see he's already there. He's just a pia.
Sounds like Tom.
Here it is. Everybody.
Signatures? Whatever you want.
It's every, except on your tibia. You don't want to break on your tibia.
That is true, that is true, yes. Nobody wants that.
Oh my God, my hand won't even work. Okay. Are you good? You back to normal? All right, Charlie, would you read these first?
We have unbelievably reached other business. Uh, 81 Bluff Avenue, board to vote whether the architectural design change is considered a major or minor modification pursuant to 174-24C9A of the zoning bylaws.
Good evening once again, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing the Lenhearts, owners of 81 Bluff Ave. Uh, board is well familiar with this project. It was approved, uh, as a raise and replace. There was a request for a minor modification for a widow's walk that was approved by this board during the discussion regarding the widow's walk. Uh, building commissioner, uh, noticed a discrepancy with a second-floor balcony where it was originally shown as four feet by fourteen, and the new plan showed it as six by, six by fourteen. So there was a two-foot extension difference, um, and approximately, I guess that leads it to about twenty-eight square feet of additional, uh, lot coverage. Uh, so my clients are seeking a permission from this board to administratively approve the six-by-fourteen-and-a-half, uh, balcony, second-floor balcony. It doesn't affect any of the setbacks that were approved by this board because it sits further back than what's at the front yard. The lot coverage goes up minimally, but still under what was already existing on the property.
May I speak, Mr. James? I'm upset at this application, and I'll tell you why. I spent the time with Mary Ann, I looked at the actual plan. I looked at the block, the title block, and in that block is revisions. There's nothing in that title block. Anyone that is an architect, a registered certified architect, knows, engineers, sort of, you know, they all know, when you make a revision, you put the revision in the block. You put the date and what the revision is. I don't know how many times tonight, I've read plans that say revision and what it is and what the thing. I'm not happy about this.
I understand.
For me, my attitude is amend the plan correctly, show the revisions, bring it, this is my opinion, bring it back to the board, and then we make a decision whether it's a modification or if it's major or minor.
I'm going to agree with Ron.
Period. And it, whatever, this, this is upsetting us how somebody needs to learn how to do a set of plans and make revisions there too. Luckily, he caught it. But we would have approved the plan that indirectly approved a change. Wrong. Very upsetting.
Change that is not included on the plan.
Exactly. That was on the plan but wasn't told to this board. He picked it up and, you know, Scott has picked up a couple, but this one's very upsetting. And frankly, I'm, I'm, I'll abstain if asked to vote on it, but frankly, I'm against it.
This is multiple times they've come back for different faces.
You know, I, I.
This is the second time.
It's just very, very frustrating to me because we should be able to rely on a title block and look and see what those revisions are.
This is the same.
It would have said in the revisions that the, the, the deck was revised also and the date. That's BS, it's wrong.
Is this the same one that they, to get through the first time, they pulled the widow's walk off, then they came back and put the widow's walk back in?
Yeah, there was a, there, it was a little bit confusing on the, there was a set of plans that had a widow's walk on it, but it wasn't provided to the board at the time of the meeting, so we had to come back.
Yeah, see.
I understand, I'm not. I'm not...
It's wrong.
It was slippery.
It's all just wrong.
It shouldn't... Until it's completely done, you shouldn't come here.
So fix the plans, submit them to the board, and I think at that point down the board you make a decision whether it's major or minor. Because the plans aren't even right.
Correct now?
The site plan is, yes. The site plan is...
No, but the building plans are not correct.
The building plan...
Right now.
Right, it doesn't have the...
The building plans that are on our file are incorrect.
I was kind of surprised we don't have a building plan showing us.
So the building plans that Mary Ann has in the file right now do not have revisions on the title block. They're wrong.
They're not correct?
I agree with him.
I understand. So I will have the architect do what he's supposed to do.
Good way to put it.
I mean, I'll tell you, I did ask him to do it the way you're asking to do it.
Maybe you'll do it now?
Well, now...
I am more than happy to vote against this application. More than...
This is Other Business.
This is Other Business, so no continuing.
I'll just file...
File a new?
I'll file the new plans, and you can put it on when it's a bit... When the board has... Under Other Business. Because I say, I mean, this... Notwithstanding the issues with the plans, you know, we're asking for a... I would suggest it's pretty minor.
Exactly. Well, I'm not so sure.
I don't...
Not sure it's mine. So I'm not sure if it's mine. For me, right now, it's major. It's a major modification. It changes lot coverage? Major modification for me.
I just don't like the way the whole process went from the first time till now.
You should never have...
It just... As my opinion as one person, it's very slippery the way everyone voted.
Yeah, I think part of the problem... And I'm not making any excuses for anybody, you know. I think part of the problem was they tried to, you know... It was right before town meeting, trying to get it in to, you know... So they didn't get, you know, affected by the potential of the raise and replace being removed.
They had a time to correct this issue.
No, I understand.
Period. It's...
I will make sure that it's done the way the board requests.
We'll see you next time.
Thank you very much. As always, a pleasure. Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Enjoy.
Hey, see you later.
You see Mike, say hi.
Have fun, Dave.
We have Pesci's bill. Do we do that tonight, too?
Yes, why don't we do it right now?
Okay.
Well, would you like to make a motion?
Um, let's see. I don't... Sorry. Is this the bill here?
Here it is.
The 3121?
Yep.
Yeah. So I'd like to make a motion that... I believe we're holding funds on this?
Not yet.
Oh, the $5,000 was in the motion prior to. Right, so once the $5,000 is posted, I make a motion that we recommend to the whoever pays the bills of this town to pay Mr. Pesci his $3,121.35 out of the $5,000 that has been requested to be posted.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Okay, Bill seconds?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Nobody. It's unanimous.
Okay, the only other item on our agenda is the vote to reorganize board member appointments.
Okay. We need to reorganize the board by electing a new chairman, vice chair, and clerk. I've been on this board 19 years.
You're not that old.
As of October.
That's a long time.
I've had the honor of chairing this board for probably about the last 12 years. As of right now, I'm not going to accept a nomination for any of the three positions on the board that I've just mentioned.
Mr. Chair, I want to say thank you very much.
I will stay on the board, but I... I'm not going to take one of the positions if nominated. Normally, I would ask Bill, I would recommend or nominate Bill to be the next chair. He's been here probably 15 years.
16.
But 16 years.
Who's counting?
And I think he's got something to say about that.
Yeah. John asked me about this. He told me what his plan was, that he didn't want to be chair anymore, that he wanted to continue on the board and wanted to know if he could nominate me for the chair. I told him with some of my vision issues and other commitments that I really didn't think I could accept that. And therefore, I would like to nominate Ron Bonvey as our next chair.
Before we get into it, do we have other nominations?
With that nomination, I don't think we need any other nominations.
I think that's the perfect...